We will call our meeting to order and recognize that we are holding our meeting on the unceded traditional territories of the Sashat and Hoopa Cheset First Nations. We have an agenda in front of us. Counsel, are there any late items to add? None? And anything additional from the clerk?
No.
Okay, thank you. Would somebody like to move approval of our agenda?
So move Madam Mayor.
All in favor? Carried. And we have minutes from the meeting held at 6:00 PM on December 10th, 2019, for adoption.
So move Madam Mayor.
Is there a second or?
Second, Madam Mayor.
And any questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor? Carried. So on to unfinished business. Of course, the intent of this meeting is to work forward our budget. We do have a number of reports that we're going to go over. There'll be lots of opportunity for counsel to ask questions. And then if any members of the public would like to ask questions or make comments, there is an opportunity toward the end of the meeting. So you do have to stick around, but we will welcome any feedback that people would like to offer. Okay, so getting started, we have the five-year financial plan bylaw in front of us with quite a bit of information, and then a number of reports. The first one, Report A, is from the Acting Director of Finance, 2020 to 2024 Financial Plan and Summary of Changes.
Madam Mayor, the Acting Director of Finance has had to step out to deal with a matter that just arose. I can speak to this report.
Sure.
So the Acting Director's report essentially introduces that, this document you just mentioned, the five-year financial plan. If you can scroll up for me a little bit. How about down? Thanks. The other up. That this is a living, working document, so it's not meant to be etched in stone. And at every meeting and between meetings, as we get sharper numbers or we learn more about different projects and whatnot, you might see things change a little bit. So looking down at the background, the Acting Director is telling us that there's a net increase in this budget that you have in your hands now has changed a little bit since the last one you, the last working document you received. A net increase to capital projects of $100,000 in this version of the financial plan. The increase includes changes to the Third Avenue Upgrade project. Cost estimates for that project have been increased by $500,000 based on engineering preliminary estimates. The city's also making a grant application. We think we're, could be eligible for $400,000 for that project. So there's a net difference of $100,000. And we can certainly talk about that in the capital, in the review of the 2020 capital budget. Funding in the 2020 capital plan from McLean Mill and Clock Tower project is anticipated to be drawn from gas tax reserves. In the previous draft budget, we'd shown those from general revenue and land sale reserves respectively. And there's a summary presented there of changes since the last draft document that you had in your hands at the January 13th meeting. They include a $100,000 reduction in the anticipated operating expenses at McLean Mill, an addition of a contingency for McLean Mill of $40,000. And we moved, as I said earlier, we moved the McLean Mill Dam project funding as, instead of coming from operating in 2020, it now is identified as coming from gas tax reserves. And all of this, Madam Mayor, is subject to counsel's direction and approval. This is a draft document. Also, the City Works Facility Relocation Project is $50,000 earmarked from gas tax reserves. You'll recall that at the January 13th meeting, counsel received a report from McGill Engineering around the City Works facility and its risk, seismic and tsunami risk. And counsel directed that $50,000 be put into the draft budget for consideration. The Clock Tower project, the money had, for that project, had been coming from land sale reserves. Now it's identified as gas tax reserves, and there's no change to the budget, no impact to the budget of that change. Additions to the Third Avenue Upgrade project, as I just said, there's a, we've increased the projected expenditures by $500,000 on that, and showing a $400,000 anticipated grant for a net change in this budget from the previous one of $40,000.
Thank you. I'm sure there's going to be questions. I think specific to, so we are going to go through the capital budget in full today, I believe. Counsel chooses to do that, so some of these could be brought up there. But counsel is welcome to ask questions about the project specifically here as well if they choose. Are there? Counselor Corbial?
Yeah. Could the C O provide a little bit more information regarding a fairly significant change to the Third Avenue upgrade?
Madam Mayor, at the January 27th meeting, next Monday, you'll receive a staff report and engineering report with some detail on that, on that project. I can't recall the budget figure we had in there. I think it was 400. We had $400,000 identified for that project. The cost obviously now projected to be $900,000 because we've retained an engineer, and we've got an estimate from that engineer. On the plus side, of course, we think we're eligible for a grant for that. But we can speak to that now if you want details, but you will be getting a report on January 27th.
Could I just ask a follow-up to that? Is this potential grant, a grant that would be, what's the percentage funding for the grant?
Again, it's in the report, January 27th. I believe it's sixty, up to 60%.
Okay.
Of, 60% of costs for multimodal transportation. The grant stream used to be bike B C, so now improvements for pedestrian and cycle access. Those portions of that project would be eligible.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Solder?
And I want to carry on with that, the question the mayor asked. What happens regarding the grant doesn't come in? Then we come back to counsel and we have to change?
That's correct. If counsel was to approve this project and the expenditures, and if we were not successful in getting the grant, we would come back to counsel. And counsel could decide if you wanted to continue with that project, to minimize or narrow down the project, make it lesser of a project, or merrilous scope is what I'm trying to say, or allocate funds from reserves. Like, you would have some choices at that point.
So could we not do the project also in stages if that?
We could ask the Director of Engineering what that would look like to stage a project. You can ask him now, you can ask him on January 27th, or you can ask him when we don't get the grant.
We'll let him think. I have no problem waiting till January 27th when we see the whole project. But the whole, the question too is, are we not putting the cart before the horse type of thing to approve a budget that we haven't seen what has to be improved? You know, like what, what's going to be in front of us?
So I'll just say that we're not looking to approve any budget today. This is just the first of our committee of the whole meetings for budget. So if it remains in here today unchanged, it doesn't give any approval to do it at this point.
You're right. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, we'll wait till council meeting.
I think there'll be a lot more discussion on this topic, for sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Poon, did you have any questions? Okay. Counselor Paulson?
No, someone has questions here a little later.
Okay, wonderful. And Counselor Washington?
Okay.
Okay. My question for this portion is, I see the comment, the McLean Mill Dam project, moved funding from gas tax to operating budget. Is this an increase or just a shift in where the money's coming from?
Exactly. It's a shift in where we anticipate drawing the funds from. So it, from, if it was an operating, it would be a direct impact on taxation this year. We had room in the gas tax reserves to allocate from there.
Okay.
Again, totally subject to counsel's decision.
Sure. And on that topic, I believe we had $160,000 or somewhere in that range allocated last year. Is this increased funding that's in this year's budget for it?
It's increased budget, funding in this year, but it's not increased since the last draft budget you've seen. But I can't recall exactly what the number is there.
Okay, I think just because I wasn't aware that we had changed the budget since last year. I know when we put the project to tender, we, it came in significantly higher, and we opted to not move forward at that time, thinking that we would re-tender and get potentially lower bids?
Since that time, we've, we're projecting more money from that time.
Okay.
So if you want to re-tender the same work, I think we'll get similar prices. If you want to re-tender the same work without budget, counsel can direct us to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. And Clock Tower funding from land sale to gas tax reserve, I know it says no budget impact, but has the scope of that project changed, or has the budget increased? Has money been added into the budget from, for this year? Because I don't think we were aware of that.
Like the, like the dam project, there's, I believe, $100,000 projected in 2020 that was not budgeted in 2019 for that project. And like the dam project, when we went to tender, we found that we were, our budget was considerably under what the actual bids were.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are no other questions on this portion, I think we can move on. Next, we have a report from the C O, 2020 to 2024 Five-Year Financial Plan Responses to Questions Received Up to January 13th. So counsel, I know some counselors have submitted lists of questions and others have not. There will be more opportunities, but we wanted to give staff the opportunity to prepare responses to any questions that were submitted beforehand. And I think the intent is that we'll go through verbally all of those questions so that people can, so that people can ask follow-ups if needed. So I will pass this over to the C O to go through these questions.
Madam Mayor, you had asked earlier if managers in different areas could answer those questions. And while I like to speak in council meetings, I'd be tickled if managers came up one by one and responded to questions from their areas. So, Madam Mayor, would you like to ask the questions? And then either I'll answer or a different manager will answer?
I would love for you to ask the questions, and a manager can answer. We'll just hand it right over.
Okay, let's try that. So the first question?
And then if we could just make sure we give counsel an opportunity, if counselors have questions as we're going through these one by one, I think it would be great to ask those questions on the spot and not wait until the end.
Okay. First question. Please explain the following account lines in the draft financial plan, 2020-2024. Recovery accounts, 23951, 23952, 23953. You get the idea. These are recovery accounts. Please explain what they're for. The Acting Director of Finance isn't here, so I'll read her response. That is that the recovery accounts relate to shared services offered within the city, which include gravel administration, purchasing, public works administration, and equipment charges for vehicles. Accounting estimates are used to calculate such costs based on hourly or monthly charge-out rates. The expenses seen in the budget are for accounting purposes only and allow us to redistribute the expenses to the correct departments and projects on a monthly basis. And in brackets, we use a standardized costing method that allows us to redistribute costs recovered from accounting estimates. And the director's comment is, I have yet to find an easy explanation for this. So I take from that, Madam Mayor, it's an accounting practice.
Yeah.
The next question, and I'll ask Fire Chief to answer this one. What is the impact of the fire underwriter survey reading if the fire truck is not replaced?
So failure to replace the fire engine would result in the city of Port Alberni's Public Fire Protection Classification Rating through the Fire Underwriter Survey to be downgraded. So currently, we're at a three. It would be downgraded definitely to a four at least. And this almost definitely would result in an increase in insurance rates for commercial, industrial, and multifamily properties.
Thank you. Counselor Poon?
How long would it take them to catch on to this change?
Well, this is now being streamed by YouTube and is becoming more and more popular, so.
Five minutes.
I really can't answer that question. I'm not sure.
Five minutes from now.
Yeah.
I think the question is, you know, how long would it take? So is this something that's reviewed annually? Is there, is there a trigger for it to be reviewed, or is it just, you know, every few years they look at it and at that point, we would be downgraded?
Yeah, typically, we'll request for them to come in periodically. And I'm not sure if a community is identified to no longer be meeting the obligations that were in place at the time the fire under survey was last conducted. I believe that they have the ability to intervene kind of midway through in between surveys and downgrade us at that time. And right now, we're sitting at a 70.35%. The threshold between a Class III and a Class IV is 69.99. So we're holding on to that Class III just by a thread. So definitely failure to replace the fire engine would result in a downgrade.
Thank you. Counselor Washington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The downgrade would also include city property, too. So essentially, any city-owned property would, insurance rate would go up, too.
Correct, yeah. Any, any assets that are covered by insurance, yes.
Counselor Solder?
So my question is, excuse me, do you know what the percentage would be for insurances if we did downgrade?
I believe that it depends on a number of factors. So there'd be a different insurance grading for, say, a single-family homeowner as it would be for industry. And then depending on the level of industry, a major mill as an example, they would have a full suite. And when they have their insurance reviewed, it's, it's usually a group will come in. I know this is from my, my previous life, where annually you'll get audited, and, and your insurance rates are then kind of farmed out to a number of different places, and they'll apply. So there's not really, I don't have the answer for you. I don't, I can't tell you definitively that for me as a homeowner in town, my insurance will go up by X percent, and that a major industry would go up by Y percent. Just, I would, I would speculate that it would be significant.
So I'm kind of curious to know if other communities have downgraded before, and have you been involved in that or know of a community?
Well, typically, communities are always striving to upgrade their, their insurance rating. I know that Campbell River, as an example, has been successful in upgrading their insurance rating. We were successful in upgrading our insurance rating. Now, the timing between, from what I can gather, the two fire underwriter surveys, the last one was in 2007, and I believe the one previous to that was 1986 or something. So we had a significant amount of time in order to upgrade our insurance grading. And of course, the insurance world has changed in between then and now as well.
Okay, and one last thing.
Yes.
The fire truck that we're looking at is quite a, a really fancy, fancy, to me, fire truck. It could be perfect for our community. But the thing is, is there something that's under the value that we're getting right now, or is?
Yeah. And I would argue that the, the fire truck that we're getting is not particularly fancy. It's, it's functional. And certainly, I guess, we might be putting the cart before the horse a bit here. We don't even know what the fire truck is that we're getting at this point. We haven't released an RFP. But essentially, the core of, of what we're looking at getting is exactly what we got in, in 2010. The core of it, meaning, you know, the horsepower, the transmission, the pumping capacity, the seating capacity, all these sorts of things are essentially the same as what we did in 2010. That 2010 truck I was looking today has 97,000 kilometers that we put on it in the, in the past 10 years. They're workhorses. They, and the 97,000 kilometers doesn't really do justice to the work that these, these trucks do. You have to remember that, you know, it sat on scene at Margaret Street pumping water for eight hours, and those don't clock on the odometer. So these trucks are worked hard, and we need something that's reliable. It's not a bells and whistles truck, I can assure you of that. It's a, it's a functional truck. And unfortunately, as I had given in a previous report, with tariffs and the Canadian dollar change from 2010 till this date and all of these things, the cost of buying a fire truck is, is just, it's gone up quite a bit, unfortunately.
Counselor Poon?
Is there any advantage to improving our current rating, and what would the investment cost be?
So to go from a three to a two, is that kind of what you're thinking? So to go from a three to a two, the places that we would need to put the most investment in is staffing. So we would need to have quite a bit more staffing than we presently have. Within the fire underwriter survey, it shows kind of your room for improvement. That would be one of the key ones. It's not something that I'm asking for right now. I think the cost of extra staffing in order to get from a three to a two, I can't stand here today and argue that, that funding model makes sense today. But yeah, I would say that right now, we certainly don't want to lose a three. A two might be a bit ambitious.
Counselor Corbial?
Just so I'm clear, this fire engine we're talking about replacing now, it's not the ladder truck, is it, Doug?
That's correct, yeah. So at the last committee of the whole meeting that I was speaking on, we've deferred. So within the fire underwriter survey, we're able to push the, so it's a 1997. Normally, the ladder truck would have been replaced in 2017. We applied for it and were successful because the ladder doesn't move as much as the engines do, and it's been well-maintained, all of these things. We're able to get a five-year extension on the ladder. So now the ladder is going to be a 2022 delivery. This is an engine. So there's a couple of trigger points. One is Engine 1 was built in 1991. It's, it's, so it's 29 years old. The way that the fire underwriter survey replacement schedule works is that there's, so from year one to year 15, it can be considered a frontline truck, a first-line truck. So it's responding to, every time that we get toned out, it's the first truck out of, out of the station. On the year 16 to year 20, it can be considered a second-line truck. So then it'll respond as a secondary engine for, if there's a second call at the same time, or you have a structured fire, whatever the case may be. And then from year 20 to 29, it can be considered a reserve truck. So on very large fires or, or on events where, where our primary engines are down, then it can act as a, as a spare. Essentially, it'll slot into one of those spots. And on its 30th birthday, it received no, no more credit for insurance purposes. And so we kind of have two different practices to pick from. The fire underwriter survey is already the lesser of the two practices. The other, the best practices, I'll say, is NFPA. NFPA says that you can run it frontline for 15 years, and then you can put it into reserve at year 16, and then at year 25, you retire it. So out of the two standards, we've already elected to go to, I guess, the lesser but still acceptable standard, and we wouldn't want to push it any more than that.
If I could, is there not a requirement that after 20 years, that they're inspected annually by a certified inspector?
Yeah, so every year, actually, what we do is we run each one of the engines through a pump test. There's different levels of pump testing that, that can take place. So after year 20, you go back to doing what's called a certification pump test. So it's a more stringent pump test, and it's, it's designed to really test it to make sure that, that it's not going to fail. And so that's what we do with, with the engines that are 20 years and older.
And we have a certified person in our fire department?
Yeah, so you're, you're testing it to a standard. And we've currently have a firefighter mechanic who's, is capable in doing so, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So this truck is 29 years old right now? 1991?
Yeah, Engine 1 is 29 years old. Engine 4 is 20 years old, and Engine 5 is 10 years old.
Do we get, with our automatic mutual aid agreements, do we get credit insurance-wise from the other trucks in the valley?
Yeah, so that credit is already factored into that fire underwriter survey number. And it expressly says within the fire underwriter survey report that without that automatic aid agreement, we would not be at that Level 3 grading. We do get some credit for their apparatus as well. It can make up to a maximum of 33% of, of, of your apparatus allotment, which is already factored into this fire under.
I just wondered more specifically with Beaver Creek, I believe, just purchased a new truck or has purchased and is waiting for it to come, if that factors into how many trucks we need that are under the allowable age for insurance?
Yeah, kind of interestingly enough, so we have a 10-year-old truck, and now we're going to have a zero-year-old truck. And, and the way that the fire underwriter survey is, is it assumes that you're always going to have the vehicles within those time gaps that I had just explained. And so it's, it's really if you're going to add something on top of that, or if you're going to let something timeout, like we were just discussing, then there's a change which could either bolster your, your, your number, which in our case wouldn't bring us from a three to a two, but might make us a safer three. And, or, if you drop something off and you let it lapse, and then we're again at risk, let's say Beaver Creek decided to not replace an engine, that might threaten our fire under survey ranking as well.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, it shows in the budget 609,000 from IRF, and then 128,000 just says from reserve. I don't know if there's a note at the end here that speaks to where, what reserve that is. I think this page is cut off, but do you know where the rest of that money is coming from, 128,000?
I believe that comes here in, within the Q and A, and I believe that C O is going to speak to it. There is money that's sitting in a wildfire reserve, which was accrued during the 2018 wildfire season.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions on this question? Seeing none, wonderful. C O?
Madam Mayor, if the chief's going to take 20 minutes and have your questions, I can, I can order in dinner. Madam Mayor, the chief has answered the next question, which was, can we keep the present fire truck an additional 10 years and replace it at 30 instead of replacing it at 20 years? And Chief Owens just told us that the truck we're replacing is in fact 30 years old. Any questions, further questions on that?
Nope.
The next question, if, again, for the Fire Chief, if the current self-contained breathing apparatus are not performing as required, why would we want to sell them, and who would be interested in purchasing faulty equipment?
So I have a report here specifically who would want to buy them and why would we want to sell them. So the place that we have spoken with about this, and we've also got the, within my report for proposed replacement of self-contained breathing apparatus, also the same place that we looked to purchase used equipment that might be on the market. So this place, it's, it's like a, a car dealership for SCBA's. And, and you can bring your, your beautifully well-tuned Maserati SCBA there, or you can bring your falling apart push, pull, or drag event SCBA there, and they'll, they'll take it all. They'll discompensate you differently depending on what they... on what they end up finding with it. So that's, this business is business, is just taking in used SCBA's of all different qualities, and trying to refurbish them, and then put them back out to the market.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Counselor Solda?
So I have several questions on it. First, I just can't, we do have a report, yes, later in the agenda if we want to get more into this topic, for sure. Okay, we can move on to the next one.
Madam Mayor, the next two, chief can answer as well if he wants to, because I believe he wants to. First one is, what is $120,000 in wildfire reserves? And I'll just say, although it's not in the answer, that's just an operating reserve that was earned from wildfire activities. But Chief, do you want to expand on that?
Yeah, again, I wasn't here for this, but my speculation is that we wouldn't have anticipated this money to have come in. And so when we offered up our services to the province, and then we subsequently invoiced the province, there was this money that had come back, and it was, I guess, sitting unallocated. Is that the best way to put it, CAO?
Yeah, we put it in an operating reserve without being allocated. And the next question, if I can move to that same, similar topic, why does the fire department have wildfire reserves? If the fire department earns monies, should those not go to the city of Port-au- Bernay General Revenue? And the written answer, the chief might want to expand on, is at the time these reserves were generated and received, they were held in an operating reserve, the use of which would be determined at a later date by council. The draft financial plan, this draft financial plan indicates that these funds will be used to augment the equipment replacement reserve funds to purchase the new fire engine you just discussed, and that decision, of course, is subject to council's approval.
Are there any follow-up questions on this? Okay, I think that reserve is a great way to subsidize the fire truck purchase without using more taxpayer funds, or direct taxpayer funds. Okay.
Next question, why is there a need to replace the 2007 Dodge Dakota? If the vehicle is operating effectively, then why does it have to be replaced?
So the written answer here is, during recent inspection by our maintenance department, there were issues with the vehicle that should be repaired. So we have subsequently got a quote from the local Dodge dealership. It looks like the repairs are going to be about $32, $3300 before actually digging into it and getting invoiced. So that's subject to change. We also requested what the vehicle was worth, and the local dealership in town here has offered us $3,000 for the Dodge Dakota as it presently sits. It's, yeah, I guess I'll take any questions.
Okay, Counselor Corbial.
First of all, is it a four-wheel drive?
I believe it is a four-wheel drive, yes.
And how many kilometers on it?
It's sub 100,000, but not far off.
And you earlier said that you have a firefighter mechanic. Is this beyond the scope of firefighter mechanic to repair what's ever wrong with this thing?
Yes, it would be, it would be more of a major overhaul that would need to be done on it.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Counselor Solda?
So what about the works yard? We have mechanics in the works yard. Would they not be able to do that if the fire mechanic can't do it?
Yeah, I think that the work might be able to be done by those individuals. Now, I would imagine, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn, that the cost would be comparable if you take what it costs for the local mechanic to do the work, or one of our employees with a fully loaded salary to do the work. I think at the end, you're going to be more or less in the same range to do the repairs to it. And at the end of it all, you'd still have a truck that is nearing the end of its life.
I just look at 100K is not very much. I mean, and that's what surprises me, that this particular truck goes to the fires or goes on call, or how does this particular truck work? Can you explain to the?
Sure. The primary use of this particular truck is, it's utilized by the chief fire prevention officer. So that person goes around and does fire inspections. They also do fire investigations after we have a structured fire. So its primary use is kind of as a vehicle that's motoring around town, and then on occasion, it does respond as an emergency vehicle to typically a structured fire that we would be having.
Well, I just look at $45,000 opposed to like $3,000 or $4,000 to repair a vehicle. There's, I mean, we all have gone through that, and I'm just having some little issues on that. I know the money's coming out of IRF, and it's there, but still, you know, I just have some questions on that. You know, 45,000, we would say 40,000 even if the vehicle costs 5,000 to repair.
Yeah, and I think further down the road, once we have our asset management software up and running, that'll better inform us, kind of that cost-to-risk ratio. Certainly, we don't want to be getting to a point with emergency vehicles that are owned by the city where we're standing on the side of the road with the hood up when we should be attending to an emergency. But this vehicle does need some work if we're going to keep it into operation. It's a 13, you know, model year 2007s usually come out in 2006. It might be a 14-year-old vehicle. It's, I would say that it's nearing the end of its reliable life. And I guess I'll leave it at that.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I have a question for our CEO, if I may.
Absolutely.
Regarding the policy for our vehicles, when was the last time that was looked at?
Madam Mayor, I can't recall off the top of my head, but that's a question we'll track and come back in a future meeting.
That would be great. I would like to know. Maybe it's time to take a look at our policies. Absolutely. Thank you. Counselor Poon.
Yes, you mentioned that it needs to be replaced, but when you're shopping for a replacement, does it need to be a pickup truck? You mentioned that the use of it is mainly for inspections and things like that. Do you need a pickup truck?
Well, and certainly the vehicle that we've been test-driving in anticipation of potentially replacing is an SUV, and a hybrid SUV. One of the other notes on this particular 2007 Dodge Dakota is, as you might know, the Dodge Dakotas are quite a small vehicle. This very small vehicle is equipped with a V8 motor, and is unsuccessful in making it to Victoria and back on a single tank of fuel. It's not exactly the most environmentally friendly or friendly to the daily operation. We've been having some frank discussions about, does it need to be a pickup truck? I think that we still have a need for a pickup truck, or perhaps more than one pickup truck within the fire department fleet in order to put dirty gear in the back of all that kind of stuff. But we're having a hard look and trying to, trying to be serious about being more environmentally friendly, and certainly having a hybrid-type vehicle, or an electric-type vehicle is, I think, a step in the right direction where we have an ability to do so.
Counselor Poon, if you could start turning your mic on. We're having multiple text messages and messages about the fact that your mic isn't on, so. Thank you. Counselor Solda?
Just one more question on the hybrid. So is our mechanic able to redo repairs on a hybrid? Or do we have to go for more education, or take the truck out?
Yeah, I would, it's a great question. I would say that the mechanics will have to continue to take more education, and I think it's a necessary thing, I was going to say necessary evil, it's not a necessary evil, it's a necessary good, in my mind, that if we're going to be going to plug in electrics and more green vehicles, then our mechanics are going to have to keep up with the times.
And at the moment, we don't have a plug-in for the electric. We would have to install one, right?
Yes, we would have to install one at the fire hall. I think we would probably take the lead that has already been established here with bylaw services and some of the vehicles here at City Hall.
I just have, again, a thing about the 45,000 and 100K, and just so you know.
Sure. And just for clarity there, we wouldn't need a plug-in for a hybrid. So what they're looking at is either a pickup truck or potentially a hybrid SUV. You don't need a plug-in for a hybrid. They're not proposing a full electric vehicle.
And on this particular one, it's the same as the Mitsubishi Outlander that's out here. So it's a plug-in hybrid. We've already had the vehicle on a test-drive basis, and it comes equipped with a trickle charge style charger. We found it to be adequate for that specific vehicle. So although we would need something in there, it's, for this particular vehicle, we've kind of temporarily installed it without much effort.
Great, thank you. Counselor Paulson?
Just a comment to make. Can I, you know, you said that this vehicle basically has a $3,000 trade-in value, and anytime you're spending $3,000 to $5,000 in repairs on a vehicle that's worth $3,000, you're not appreciating the value of that vehicle. It does nothing for the vehicle, so it doesn't make sense. And in order to get into an SUV, I think it's a good policy for the city and for the fire department as well. But those vehicles are on the road every day, and they get used hard, and they do have a limited life. And this vehicle is planned for replacement through the IRF fund. So I just think you're spending good money and sending it out for bad by doing the repairs on a $3,000 vehicle.
Counselor Washington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just getting to what Counselor Paulson said. You're going to invest $3,000, $3,200 into a $3,000 vehicle. You still got a $3,000 vehicle. And at 2007, if there is any computer chips or anything in that, they're going to be sold that you may end up with less than a $3,000 vehicle. As for the hybrids and the plugins, there's warranty, there's going to be way, probably at least a five-year warranty on that, so we don't have to get our guys trained tomorrow, but we can work on slowly getting them trained. And I'm really hoping that the hybrids or the plugins that we're looking at are hopefully local.
Has the full 45,000 been contributed to IRF for this, or is there a shortfall?
It's my understanding that it is all contributed.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other?
And I can tell you that with this, well, and speaking to Counselor Washington's point, we did get a quote back from the group that we have been test-driving. They have given us some attractive pricing, but I don't think that it's so attractive that a motivated dealer within town couldn't compete with it. And so my suggestion would be that if approved, we would offer it out for all, yeah, out for tender for people to bid on.
Thank you. Counselor Washington?
Thank you. I'm just thinking for the warranty work, like they are pretty special. If you don't have the laptop and the right plugs to plug in for the car to tell you what's wrong with it, I'd much rather see it be done locally rather than having to drive to somewhere else to get it looked at.
Absolutely. And last question for me, and we might not be able to get this answer right now, but last year we bought a hybrid SUV, I believe for Public Works, and our budget for that was 35,000. I'm just wondering if that vehicle's been purchased, and if we did purchase it within that budget, and if so, if there's a need for this one to be more expensive than that. And if you don't have that information right now, that's fine.
So my recollection, Madam Mayor, was the budget was 38, and it did come in on budget. Again, that was a Toyota RAV4, not a plug-in, so just a straight gas electric hybrid.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, wonderful. Next question.
Madam Mayor, another question for the fire chief. In the budget, there is a replace Homatrol hydraulic tools in the amount of $55,000. What is this? It does not seem to be included in the PowerPoint presentation under Key Proposed Capital Projects.
Yeah, so to answer the question, Homatrol is a specific brand. So I put them as generic AutoX equipment within the presentation. So it is there, it is IRF, and it is within the current capital budget proposal.
It doesn't show it's coming from IRF, though. It shows it's coming from General. So is there money in IRF for it?
There should be. I don't know if it's all there. We can check that, Madam Mayor, and come back.
Thanks. Any other questions on this? Counselor Corbial?
So is this what's called the Jaws of Life?
Yeah, so Jaws of Life, so Homatrol is one company. Jaws of Life was a trademark by another company. But yes, it's the same thing.
So you've got something in place today. Does that not work anymore?
So the plan is, is hopefully, with the approval of the new engine, we're going to depart from a practice that we've been doing to date, which is, we've had Engine 5 as our primary response engine. We've had Engine 4, which is a four-wheel-drive engine. And typically till to date, we've responded to motor vehicle accidents with Engine 4, and everything else with Engine 5, except for medical response. And so the plan is, is that when we get the new engine, we'll put E-Tools on it. Currently, we use a gas-powered hydraulic pump, and we will keep the hydraulic pump and those hydraulic tools on Engine 4, which will then become our reserve engine. So in the event that either the new engine is out of service, or there's a situation where we're going out to Bamfield, or it's heavy snow conditions, and we require a four-wheel drive, then we'll send Engine 4 with its current complement, which is, I would say, at the end of its lifespan, but we'll be able to continue to limp it along in that capacity, because it won't be going out as our primary set of auto extrication tools.
Counselor Washington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, so the new tooling, will it plug into the existing? Will everything be interchangeable, or are we going to start all over again?
Actually, it won't plug into anything. So it will be battery-operated. The battery technology has come so far now that literally we'll plug it into Shore Power. It'll recharge the batteries, which will give us a lot more flexibility. It's greener. And also, the change in policy, or the way that we go about doing business, and having those primary tools on our primary engines will prevent us from our current practice, which is, we'll be out with Engine 5 across town and get a motor vehicle incident, and we have to return back to the station in order to swap out vehicles to go to the incident.
Okay. Okay, next question?
That's it for me.
I think the fire chief is done for a while. Thank you.
Don't go very far. Madam Mayor, the next two questions, I'd like to read the questions and the answers, and then if there's follow-up questions, either myself or the manager of Community Safety can respond to those. First of those two, breakdown of the $261,061 from the 2020 community policing. And so break that down, and what, if any, could be allocated from the police surplus fund. And the response is that this budget includes salary benefits for the community policing officer, approximately $25,000 for community policing costs, and $150,000 for the annual lease and associated costs for a new community safety building. All of these expenses are currently earmarked in this current draft plan to be drawn from Policing Reserve Fund. And the next question is, $150,000 for community safety building renovation comes from what reserve fund? And again, that is earmarked to come from the Policing Reserve Fund.
Okay, are there any follow-up questions? Okay, thank you.
Next question, does the deletion of the Arrow View demolition cost, $650,000, change the overall budget increase? So the written response, first of all, the answer is no. The written response is, if the Arrow View demolition continues to completion, then the $650,000 earmarked for the city to do that work will remain in the land sale reserve fund. At this point in time, it is recommended that the allocational funds remain in the budget pending the outcome of the current demolition efforts by the owner.
Are there any questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Next question, under Clock Tower, there's $100,000 from land sale. What does this mean? A request for tenders was issued in 2019 for the Clock Tower project. The price quotation for the sole bid received was approximately $100,000 higher than budget, that should read.
I wonder if the Clock Tower project, we could get maybe an update report, even if it's just brief on, because it's, we haven't heard about this project in quite a while, and I think we all were aware that it was stalled due to budget. But I don't think, I think the original budget was $100,000. So is it 200,000 now?
I believe it was, first budget was 100,000. That's correct. So it'll be 200 now.
So that's a surprise to me, and I think we should probably hear an update on this project and determine if we want to continue with the same scope or potentially change. project and determine if we want to continue with the same scope or potentially change before we allocate funds to it. Counselor Washington, did you have a question? Counselor Solder?
Madam Mayor, before my time with, regarding the Clock Tower, was there any talk about or discussion about a different type of design where it wouldn't be so much in the past?
CEO?
So, Madam Mayor, first of all, we can bring you that report. Second of all, the project was a refurbishing of the current Clock Tower, not a demolition and redesign. Where we got into unforeseen expense was when we found lead paint, lead-based paint there. So the, the level of intervention, I guess, to, to take all of the paint off and capture all that paint and do it in a way that's safe, is, they would have, they'll have to shroud the whole structure. So that's what drove the cost beyond the scope of budget.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Corbial, did you have a question? Okay, yeah, I think that a report on that project, you know, doesn't have to be urgently, but would be helpful before we move forward, because I don't think that council's even seen the design for this project at any point, so I think it would be good to have an update on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Next question. In the 2021 Key-to-Key Trail System, need to identify grants. Will, do you want to have a go at that one?
Madam Mayor, the, the answer here might be slightly misleading the BC Active Transportation Infrastructure Grant. The early 2020 intake is, I think early February is the deadline, and that early February deadline, we're actually shooting for the Third Avenue Pro, Project, so don't know timing on a second intake at this time, but that would be one grant, or any others that might be out there, that we would hope to get for the, for the Key-to-Key project, so.
Great.
Yeah, stay tuned on, on where that grant is going.
Okay, thank you. A follow-up on that, when I met with Minister Fraser, his, they asked for a summary of that project, so that they could help us source grants, and I'm wondering if we've provided that to them yet, and if?
We did provide that.
Okay, great, so hopefully they'll be able to find us some potential other grant sources as well. Any other questions on this one? Okay, thank you.
Next question. And I know Ken Rutherford from the Industrial Heritage Society is in the room. If Ken wants to respond to these, he's more than welcome to. I'll, I'll read the question and then see if Ken wants to stand up. If not, I'll read the answer. Under rail service, the Santa Train is an annual event. If you plan to, if you plan to do this, where does it show in your revenues? And there's Ken.
Ready to stand up and answer.
Yeah, the Santa Train typically, when we've run it for all the years, was a revenue source for the society. We offer the service to run the train for the community, but we don't take any revenue from the whole project for the whole year. So the Santa Train has always been a source of revenue for us to carry on with the projects that we do. We don't have many revenue sources, so that's what, that's what.
Okay.
So we, we would still like to do that, but have it as a, basically the community thanking us for the job we've done by having that revenue, so.
Okay, and so that's anticipated to continue with that model if we add rail to our budget for this year?
Correct.
Okay, any questions? Okay, CEO?
Next question, again, under rail service. What fundraiser, what fundraiser activities have you held during the past year, and what fundraiser activities will you hold in 2020? Ken, do you want me to read that answer, or do you want to?
You can, you can read it, and I'll just answer any questions.
Perfect, okay. So the, the written response is, in 2019, the fundraising that IHS, Industrial Heritage Society, did with regards to the railroad, railroad was to canvass for some donation funds toward the rebuild of the city-owned Number Seven locomotive. That was $20,000 they received, and a GoFundMe to help with the repairs to the vandalized coaches, $3,500 owned by the society. Some donations, over $15,000, were also received for the rebuild of the ex-CNR caboose, which was owned by the society. A $5,000 donation from an estate for train work has also been received. All other fundraising was done to support work for the collections at the Industrial Heritage Center. Fundraising with the, with the budget for the operation of the railroad will be the responsibility of the Albany Pacific Railway Manager and will be separate from the accounts of the Industrial Heritage Society. In developing the budget, there were no new identified fundraising plans, other than a commitment, and hopefully the revenue generated would be more than budgeted.
Okay, are there any follow-up questions? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, the, the next question, I'll ask Jeff Pellic to respond to. The question is, Telus has high-speed fiber optic internet in Portobrani, question mark. Without understanding this technology, why does the city want to install its own fiber optic cable? Can the city lease the fiber from Telus?
I'll need you to pull it over so I can read, Davina. I wrote pretty much all that out, but I can't remember it. Okay, so the wording that's there, investing in city-owned fiber optic cable will provide better and more affordable service over the life of that infrastructure. We can certainly lease fiber from Belershaw. We have been able to do that for some years now. As an example, the city currently has an agreement with a reseller of Telus services for managed fiber connectivity between the city works yard and the Bainbridge Pump House Station. So we actually just signed that agreement last year, after quite a long time of having a lack of connectivity to that station. And with the multimillion-dollar upgrade that station got, and the concerns over the water treatment and so on, we decided that it was vital to, to get that connection, and so we had to go out and get a managed fiber connection. So going to the next paragraph, there's a cost with that. It is costly to lease. So as an example, the monthly fee of the one gigabit per second fiber connectivity between the works yard and the Bainbridge Water Treatment Plant is about $3,500 per month, or $42,000 annually. If we were to lease third-party fiber to connect our five main staffed facilities, that would potentially cost us leasing about $210,000 per year. And that speed would be capped. That would be at the one gigabit per second fiber speed. So the future speeds of 10 gigabits per second, or 40 to 100 gigabits per second, would cost quite a bit more. The network bandwidth speed, I threw those speeds into there because it's actually important to proper connectivity of our programs and our staff. As the technology becomes faster, quicker, more dependent upon a network pipe, it's important to have that. So I threw in the example of home internet. So most of us are familiar with our home internet, what we're paying for, what we're getting. We're getting nowadays home internet that we couldn't even possibly dream of five years ago. And it's because of the advent and the inclusion of the 4K streaming. And then now it's going to be the 8K streaming coming up in another couple of years, and video games, and everybody's doing this inside their house, right? So you expand that into actual enterprise services, and it's just an illustration to show how that, that network speed is important. Now regarding Telus specifically, we can't lease from Telus. We've never been able to. They're not interested in that. That previous example that I used between the city works yard and the Bainbridge Pump House is going through a third-party reseller of Telus services. So Telus has always preferred to use their own infrastructure for their own purposes. And I've actually tried several times, when the pure fiber came in and got installed, they won't share. Other companies are willing, Shaw, Bell, and others, but not Telus. So I, I put that in there specifically, so happy to answer. Any questions that come out of that?
I'm not sure if anyone understood that. Thank you. That's right, okay. Counselor Solder?
Thank you. Regarding the fiber, what is the cost? Do we have a rough estimate what it would cost us to have our own?
Yes, we do. There, there is a report that is forthcoming, and I've, I've actually, I've been dusting it off over the years. I first made it up a few years back, but I haven't wanted to handed it in immediately yet, because I'm pursuing the CRTC regulations that I had previously talked about when I was last up here talking about fiber. So that slows things down a little bit, because that's the feds, right, CRTC?
Okay, so I'll wait for the report, but I do, to add to that question, is that we can, if we had our own, we could lease space to, or however that you want to call it, to the ACRD, to other businesses, too, and that would bring in money. Because I'm looking at, if you're looking at $42,000 annually, and then there's other costs, like if we went the 210, if we did lease, where would the savings be, five, 10 years from now? You know, I always look at the picture, and then it's gravy after that.
Yeah, exactly. When we were going through this, the CEO asked me, what about the, the link to get us from here to the fire hall, to get us through the dip? And it was going to be about the same distance, the same price, well, not distance, but same price as the works yard to Bainbridge. It's the same pipe. They're not charging us per kilometer. It's the endpoint in the lease that they charge us for, so it's still going to be about $42,000 to lease between City Hall and the fire hall, if we wanted to do that. So when it comes to installing our own, yeah, absolutely, we, we have an idea. The cost estimates that I had from a couple of years ago, I was talking with someone just last week, and he said those cost estimates are still valid, that, I think I provided them to you, that $70 per meter per pole and $300 per meter for in-ground, that's still the rough order of magnitude pricing. But that CRTC regulations that I'm pursuing right now could give us a, a price discount. And so that's what I'm waiting for, to provide pricing back to you, is more information coming back to me.
Okay, thank you. I guess what I'm missing on this is, why would we, like, like, why would we ever look at potentially connecting these locations for two, and pay $210,000 a year? So are we looking to just have significantly better service? Do we think that this would be more reliable in a disaster? I guess I don't understand, as a very basic level, why we would even need to look at expending this cost potentially.
Yeah, so a lot of this information is in the report that's forthcoming, but I also talked about this in a nutshell during our preliminary report. The two questions that you asked, are there benefits? Yes and yes. It's better speeds than what we currently have, and it's, it's better reliability, absolutely better reliability. So the way that we have our facilities connected right now, our primary connection is wireless point-to-point radio. So we have towers, right? But those towers are severely impacted by wind, by rain, and by the growth of trees, the non-stop growth of trees. I can't go and cut a tree down. I mean, I can technically, but I would be in big trouble by doing it.
You cannot.
Cannot. See, I just was told. So it's been a problem for years. So what we've had to do is to lease business-class internet, the fastest that is available, from Shaw, and then now from Telus, they've got their pure fiber business internet, but it's still nowhere near the speed of fiber. And we're still paying. We're basically renting that from them, right? So what we've got in the works right now is okay, but we're still paying Shaw and Telus a lot of money for those internet speeds, because our wireless point-to-point radios aren't cutting it anymore. They just aren't. So to do something, to actually improve the infrastructure of the facilities for the city, the future has to be fiber. There's no way of getting around it. Other communities saw this coming decades ago, and they planned for it, and they put it in. I don't know why Portobrani didn't decades ago. And you know, we haven't undertaken a huge effort tearing up our main roadways and being able to work on them for a very long, long time. Maybe that's why. I've been trying to get the engineers, whenever a road is torn up, to, to put a conduit in, but we're not doing that, and that's probably because of the lack of money coming in over the decades, right? But it is something that we are definitely behind on. Other municipalities are far, far ahead of us on this.
Great, thank you. Counselor Corbial?
Just for clarity, I guess decades ago, we didn't have cell phones, never mind optic cable. What exactly are we doing? Are we just communicating with somebody out there, or are we able to alter water flow? Explain to me what exactly this gives us that we don't have now, or didn't have five or even 10 years ago?
Yeah, so fiber optic internet is, is, it's, it's a cable, but it's glass inside. That's what it's actually made of. So it carries signals at basically light speeds. So that's what gives it the advantage in speeds over connectivity cables such as coaxial, or even wireless going through the air, or ethernet or anything like that. So it's still a solid cable. It's very, very susceptible to bends. It's glass on the inside. It's just, they've been actually making fiber optic cable for decades, actually, in Saskatchewan, where I come from, so that's why I referenced decades. Maybe not here in BC, but we had it back there a long time ago. The advantage in the fiber, it's, it's a connectivity cable. It's pure and simple what it is. So it's not meant to give you building controls specifically, but it's meant to allow you to communicate with your control systems in a more efficient manner. So I'll, I'll go back to the example of the works yard and our water treatment plant at Bainbridge. So previously, with the really, really spotty, bad internet that they had there, they weren't able to communicate with that facility without going on-site. They just did it. But then you realize over time that that onsite travel back and forth is incredibly inefficient, and there's so many other things that you could be taking care of, instead of that half-hour drive out and a half-hour drive back, or whatever long it takes you and whatever truck you're driving, right? Especially in the weather. Depending upon what weather is, you know, some of the vehicles, our city van can't even get out there, depending upon the snowfall. So when we put in the managed fiber to put in there, they're now able to communicate remotely, but stably. So they don't have to go on-site for every single alarm. So they've got HVAC controls, they've got water controls, yeah, they're all there, they're all in place, but now that they've got that solid, reliable, fast internet, they can pop open a laptop, check an alarm, what's going on there, turn it off, adjust this, divert this, whatever's needed. In addition to that, with the water treatment plant, because of the extra security regulations that are coming down from the federal and from the provincial sections, security cameras are becoming more and more of a regular thing to see at a water treatment facility, or any pump house. And so with that facility, we wanted to be able to see what's going on. Is a door ajar? Is somebody parked there? Is, you know, what possible damage is going on? I mean, literally, this is, this is our drinking water, right? This is vital. And so we were not able to give a solid security camera shot out to Bainbridge with the spotty internet. But now with the fast internet, with the fiber, you can bring up all the cameras, you can view it live, you're not just viewing every five, 10-second intervals as they used to. So it's a lot more reliable to be able to do that remotely. So when it comes to our, our city facilities that we have, we're able to do everything that I just described, the way that we've got, because of the wireless radios and the Telus internet that we're already making use of. But that use is capped. That's as much as we can currently do. That's it. To go into the future, to go the very next step up, the only step up is fiber.
I think, given that we have a report coming forward on this, I think it's going to take a lot more conversation, for sure, for everyone to get a proper understanding and understand the need, but I think unless there's more budget-related questions, we will move on from this one for now. Okay, great. Okay, thank you very much. CEO?
Madam Mayor, the next three questions, I'll ask Willa Thorp to respond to. First of those, Willa, explanation, please, of the huge increase in the Gyro Use Center Maintenance Budget in 2020?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This huge increase reflects wages and benefits for the newly-created facility maintenance technician position. So the increase is mostly offset by a reduction in the museum budget as a result of not filling the museum manager position.
Thank you. Are there any follow-up questions on that? No, wonderful, next.
Madam Mayor, the next question. In 2020, the operating capital projects, parks and recreation facilities upgrades show, show up twice, $250,000. Before Ms. Thorp responds, I'll tell you that the document we gave you before had a misleading header, that I think wherever this question came from, somebody might have been looking at 2021 and saw the header of 2020, but Willa might have a better response to that.
Yeah, so Madam Mayor, we're very excited to move forward on projects such as this. However, there should be no such entry in the 2020 budget. We have articulated or started in the 2021 budget. We've looked to indicate $250,000. We've looked to indicate two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars each year in facility upgrades. So what that means is that we earmark a specific facility each year. And what those upgrades might include, so similar to where you see in Recreation Park and the Gyro Youth Center has had significant upgrades over the past year or two, we'd look to offer that same upgrade to the other facilities as well. So that would be in areas such as equipment, furnitures, fixtures, from an aesthetic standpoint, from an efficiency standpoint, as well as from an ergonomic standpoint.
Thank you. Are there questions on that? Okay. Thank you.
The next question, Madam Mayor, regarding leisure programs. The question is, our youth services and programs account 27170 appears to be so much less than our other programs. Is this market group underfunded and is there a way to expand these programs?
So Madam Mayor, in alignment with strategic plan priority number three, which is both the best use of city-owned assets and not duplicating services, we're in the process of reviewing what programming may offer as well as developing partnerships with organizations to maximize youth participation. And keeping in mind as well that updating programming and developing partnerships will also have a positive impact on strategic plan strategies 5.1.2 and 5.2.2.
That's great, thank you. Are there questions on this? Okay.
Thanks, Willa.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, our, our, our other W T, Wolf Takama, will respond to the next questions.
C E O, before that, can I just ask, just on the, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, not specific to that, but for quite a long time, we've been talking about our, you know, our asset management system. I think we got a grant to implement quite a few years ago. Are we closer to having an asset management plan for our, for buildings and roads and everything else? Just generally, because seeing, you know, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand facility upgrades per year, I would imagine that is going to help with asset management over time for sure.
Acting Director of Finance can respond to that.
Wonderful.
Madam Mayor, I'm actually preparing a report for your next council meeting on where we're kind of at on our roadmap for asset management plan. So right now, we're just in the stages of procuring a asset management software. And then we are going to start dumping all of our information into that and hopefully fill in some gaps for you guys along the way. So.
Great timing.
Yeah, we're looking at having everything implemented probably by 2021, having it all streamlined and giving you some solid information.
Perfect, thank you. Are there any questions on that, Council? Okay, thank you. Yes, for sure.
Thanks, Rosa. Madam Mayor, the next question, is the four-million-six-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety dollars the last of the cost for the Sewer Lagoon?
Madam Mayor, the, that report says that a report is coming at the 27th and that's true.
We're gonna have a really long agenda on the 27th, I'm feeling.
However, the, the four-point-six-million that is in the draft capital plan is actually, there's another amount in the draft capital plan under the sewer reserve. So there's two amounts we're talking about borrowing as well as using reserve money to complete that project. So those details will come next week.
And just as a, I know we'll get more details next week, but are all of the borrowing costs for the funds we need, whatever that amount is, to finish the Sewage Lagoon project, are those already accounted for in the draft budget?
No, not with our recent estimate, not all of it. Madam Mayor, so not all of the funding as far our recent report that will be released is in the budget. So we'll be looking at adding that into the budget if it's approved.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Next question, Madam Mayor, in the 2021 replacement of a eight-year-old Fleischer VAC truck, is this normal?
So easy answer, yes. At the time of purchase, just to explain a bit about the, the IRF process. So at the time of purchase, an anticipated service life is determined for each vehicle. Contributions to IRF are made based in part on that anticipated service life. All vehicle replacements are reviewed in the year and probably should say the years prior to scheduled replacement because a vehicle may not last as long as it was anticipated. In many cases, replacements are postponed and I think you'll see that on a future question. So in effect, move forward in the schedule. So if it's determined that a vehicle has reliable service life or maybe we had a, a large expenditure just before, I think that's happened, you know, with a transmission or whatever on some of the larger vehicles. So this Fleischer truck will be assessed this year. And again, in conjunction with all other proposed vehicle purchases and a decision will be made during the budget process next year. So yeah, at this point, it's still in the 2021 budget. But yeah, every vehicle is, is looked at prior to the year that it actually is in the budget.
Thank you. Any questions? None, okay, next question.
Madam Mayor, similar question, in 2024, replacing three six-year-old garbage trucks, is this normal?
Similar question, similar answer. And we do actually have an act, an extra truck in the, in the fleet. So we're rotating the three trucks on, on the, we use two a day, rotating the third truck in. Probably those vehicles will go eight years. Again, you know, when you're, when you're putting money into IRF over the, over the life of those vehicles, you gotta pick a number. So again, hopefully those vehicles, so far they've been really good. Yeah, huge improvement over the problems we had with the old ones, so. Yeah, we'll see that in a few years.
Next question, Capital Projects 2020, replacement of number seven-two-one, it's a 2007 Dodge Caliber. There is no dollar value attached to this, is there a need to replace it?
Yeah, and I'm not sure if the previous Director of Finance may have left that in there just to show where it was in the original IRF schedule. Yeah, no budget, the line is there, it can come out in my opinion. So let's move forward to 2022 and you'll see that that's where the actual money for replacement is, is put, so.
Madam Mayor, it might be that the same document header error has missed, was misleading to that question. So it was, it was not, it was not meant to be in 2020, but I think the header might have read 2020. Next question, in 2021, general capital, four-hundred-thousand dollars for water meter replacement.
Yeah, so we from 2020, sorry, from 2017 on, we had spread out the capital investment on replacing our water meters over six years. That'll likely be spread out over more years because I know last year, we bought near the end of 2018. We spent a lot of money and bought a whole bunch and we're still actually implementing those. So we didn't buy another four-hundred-thousand dollars worth in, in 2019. And, and my suggestion is we'll, we'll use that this year to keep moving forward. We're, we're dealing with them as they fail anyway. So it's not like that program has to happen exactly from 2017 to 2022.
Counselor Sola.
So the water meters, do they come out of the, the water fund? Because that's why, one of the reasons we set that up in the past, so where's the money coming from?
I think they do.
Maybe Rosa can help me there, but. In the water.
How much do one of those little water meters cost? Just out of curiosity.
Operating, it depends on the size of them.
Oh, okay.
Because there's, from the, you know, the residential ones to, to industrial ones, they're, they're quite a bit different.
Okay.
Anyway, it was in water operating is where.
It's coming out of the water? Okay, great, thank you.
Okay.
Next question about snow and ice removal. What happens to the projected expense if there's no snow removal required during the winter, during the year?
So pretty easy answer on that is unspent funds are recorded as general surplus in the following year's budget. So not used, they, they get carried forward. Correct?
Okay, any questions on that?
Last question, on the replacement of a 2007 Ford Ranger pickup, number one-seven-one, and replacement of a 2007 John Deere Baco number three-zero-two. Are these operating effectively? If yes, why do they have to be replaced?
So the mechanical superintendent discussed these specifically with them and that's thus the notes that I've made. Unit one-seventy-one has transmission and the other issues there, slide that over. And, and other engine issues will be costly if we have to try to maintain that in the fleet. It's a small truck, it's not very efficient for operational tasks. We've had a number of them that we've replaced. Three-zero-two is a Baco, again, it's, he says, being, just being patched together at this point. So I strongly recommend that both units be left in, in the 2020 budget for replacement.
All right.
Madam Mayor, that was not the last question.
I, I was, I thought you were maybe.
Next question for Mr. Deacon. Thanks, Wolf. Why did the Economic Development Department budget increase from seven-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-five in 2019 to nine-hundred-and-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-four in 2020? Please provide a breakdown of that budget.
So Counsel, the annual budget, the one that you issue a tax requisition for, for economic development is approximately four-hundred-thousand. Where the budget changes is where we've been successful in securing grants for different projects. So in 2019, we secured an additional three-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand dollars in grant funds. And the bullet points go down to explain what those projects were, where we, how much money we secured for the projects and where they came from. And in 2020, so far, we're showing an additional five-hundred-thousand, all of which will come from the province for the food innovation and processing hub. And I fully expect that through the year, we'll see other grant opportunities. And if they're in alignment with Counsel's strategic plan, we'll pursue those and it will add to the budget.
Great, are there any questions on any of those initiatives? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that was the last question.
Okay. Madam Mayor, if there are more questions from Council, please send them to us and we'll respond in a similar manner. I think it's helpful to have a thoughtful response and a written response as well. I also wanted to point out that some of the questions that Counselors submitted also included some, some comments. And so we did not include comments in this document. And if we haven't responded back to those Counselors, you know, please feel free to bring those comments to these meetings. But we didn't think there was a, unless you want us to also track the comments provided in a written manner.
I think how you've presented it works really well.
Thanks.
To get the information forward. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the report from the Fire Chief for proposed replacement of the self-contained breathing apparatus. I would imagine we have questions. So I don't know if you want to just quick, briefly summarize, you know, we all heard, but just for any members of the public, just generally the issues that have been had and why this is coming forward.
Sure, so as discussed in the last committee of the whole, we've been having a number of issues over an extended period of time with the self-contained breathing apparatus. We've done, in our view, everything that we can in order to make these as serviceable as possible. Kind of constant communication with the manufacturer, with the supplier that we had, et cetera. And we still continue to have these issues. So in this discussion, we've kind of illustrated what the two critical requirements of these SCBA are. Number one, that they be fully functional, meaning that they don't fail. And number two, that the firefighters have confidence that they don't fail. And I would say that we're not, we're not fulfilling either of those. So there's a long list, the list in the appendix of issues that we have had. We also had a, an SCBA that was worn by one of our captains since this report was penned. And in that, it was a, it was a training exercise, but the, the captain was utilizing the PAC. It's supposed to go into a low air alarm at twenty-five percent. We were less than, than twelve percent when the person looked down and noted that the audible bell again wasn't ringing and, and should have been. So a situation that had a very low consequence because we were in training. But if that individual was, was inside of a structure fire, could potentially have quite a great consequence. We sent that SCBA off to the manufacturer again. The manufacturer sent it back, said they couldn't replicate it and sent us a bill for, for, for them checking over the SCBA. So that's kind of the, the, kind of just a continuation of, of the issues that we've been having. And then I've, I've put down in the report here kind of what the options are. So one is maintaining the status quo. We're certainly, again, with the, the PACs that we have and, and the support for good and bad that we have from the manufacturer. And we're, we're doing everything that we can. So we can continue to do that. We can purchase refurbished SCBAs from, again, that same kind of the analogy I used earlier about the, the car dealer. We might be buying somebody else's issue in that case that has been quote-unquote refurbished. And you can see the, the price tag that would be affiliated with that. I've noted this down as a hundred-and-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-and-forty-three cents, which is our quoted amount with a ten percent contingency. And then the third option would be to replace the SCBAs early. And you can see the amount here is the a hundred-and-eighty-thousand plus a ten percent contingency there, which brings us up to a hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand.
Thank you. Are there questions from Council? Counselor Sola.
So the existing breathing apparatus that we have now, do other communities use them? Do you know?
Yes, they would.
And do they have the same kind of problems that we have? Do you know? And why would they keep using that if they, we have such big issues here?
We have heard kind of through the, the grapevine that there are places that have had freezing issues. We haven't heard the issues with the, the low air alarm not, not functioning. I think part of this is, is, is that everybody likes to tread as we should as well carefully so that we don't find ourselves in a, in a legal issue with the, the manufacturer. And so lots of times people have the issue and either they strive to remedy it or, or not. And, and you just don't hear about it, so.
So basically, it's a manufacturer problem maybe and not our issue type of thing?
And again, I'm trying to choose my words carefully so that we don't find ourselves in a legal situation.
Sure.
We, we have done everything that we possibly can through maintenance, overhauling these units, training, follow-up training. And, and we've continued to experience issues with these SCBAs.
Okay, so for our new system, the new system, the SCABA, I guess that's what you call it, what is the warranty on these? And, and we wouldn't have similar problems? And, and what does WorkSafe BC say about this? Have we been in touch with them or do they make comments?
We did engage WorkSafe BC when we had kind of our marquee issue, which was on the Margaret Street fire in March of last year. We engaged WorkSafe because of the seriousness, the serious potential consequence that could have arose from that. And it was the right thing to do. They didn't invest any lab time into it, so they again relied on the manufacturer. We've asked the manufacturer for a report on what they've found. They've given us a verbal report that they were unable to replicate what had occurred. And that was kind of where that, that ended. WorkSafe BC, we agreed with WorkSafe BC that we would refurbish all the units. We did do so. We have since had more issues with the SCBAs after, after doing that. We have since had more issues with the SCBAs after, after doing that. And we've engaged in additional training and again, still had issues.
Madam Mayor, I have just two more questions regarding this. How many suppressions are you looking at purchasing?
We're, we're looking at doing like-for-like and, and sorry, I did neglect to answer one of the questions, which was a warranty question. It just so happens that, that the timing is as such that the SCBAs that were seeking to purchase with this 198,000, that manufacturer has just come out with a for-as-long-as-you-own-it warranty, which is a, a new offering, which has never been offered before. So what they're saying is, is as long as you own these SCBAs, they will continue to support them and, and warranty them, which is pretty extraordinary. That's not to say that we won't eventually have to replace them. But, but, but our, our confidence is bolstered by that.
Okay.
If I could just add, if I could just add, follow up to that. Is this, the company, obviously this is a well-known company. Is this the company that we had prior for the last set of packs that we had? So it's a company that we're comfortable, will be around, of course, to work with us on that warranty?
Yeah, it is the same company that we were with before. And it's the same company that all of our mutual aid partners are currently using as well as our public works.
Great, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
And so how many are we looking at purchasing?
We would be looking at purchasing the exact same complement that we currently have. So we would just trade like-for-like.
Twenty-eight?
I believe it's twenty-eight, yeah.
And firefighters, we have twenty-two, don't we? How many firefighters?
Yeah, so we have twenty in suppression and Chief Fire Prevention Officer and two chiefs.
So if we have, so why so many if we have twenty? I know you want a backup, but why, if you have twenty in suppression, that would make eight spare, right?
Yeah, so the individuals don't have the SCBA kind of sitting with their gear. The SCBAs are mounted in, in the apparatus. So that, that allows for the complement of the SCBAs in each of the apparatus and then four spares, which with the, the current model that we have, we've been using all four of those spares pretty consistently. Our hope, of course, is, is that we, we won't be in the future. But that's pretty standard to have a, a complement of, of spare units in case you have an issue.
Okay, and a question to the CIO regarding the purchasing policy. Does it have to go to RFP because of the amount?
Madam Mayor, Counsel, the, this would have to go to a tender or an RFP. But if we want, we can, we can sole, not sole, well, we could sole source. We could tender on the manufacturer. So we would get vendors bidding on the same units.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're aware. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think we had Counsel Washington and then Counsel Corbial.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in, previous in 2013, Brand S was, everybody had it. So if you were in the pulp mill, their bottles would exchange with your bottles in an emergency. You say city works, everybody had the same thing and all your other volunteer departments had the same. A budget meeting in 2013, it went out for RFP and Brand X was 10 cents cheaper, so we went with that. So all our stuff got scrapped out. We put in this and we've been having trouble with it since 2013. So now you want to go back to Brand S, which is the same as everybody's. Would it not make more sense to buy brand new today rather than, like you said, you wanted to go into that used? You had a line there about used, Brand S that you could buy from the used car dealer there. So it would make more sense to buy the brand new, fully warranted, Brand S, complete, today, nineteen, 2020 models and have a lifetime warranty.
Yeah, and the recommendation that I've made in the report is to purchase new, in part because the new packs come with that lifetime warranty. It does return us back to being in line with the same manufacturer as all of our, our mutual aid partners. The other reason for it is that every so often, the, the NFPA standard is changed and there's additional safety features that are built into the, the packs in order to meet the standard. Since the time that we purchased these last SCBA, there's been three revisions to that NFPA standard. So there's been three rounds of safety improvements that have been made. This would get us the, the very latest in, in those safety enhancements, whereas a used pack would not.
Counsel Corbial.
Well, the one question, one of the questions I had was answered, which is, I guess, Brand S is, it's called, is the one that's used by most fire departments and that's the one we, we went away from, correct? And just looking at this list of incidents that have happened over the last couple of years, and one as recent as late November of last year, some of these are, are pretty serious. The issues around alarms not functioning correctly, for example. So, you know, I, for one, think we have to move on this and I do tend to agree that, you know, getting the lifetime warranty makes a lot of sense. And it's kind of unfortunate that we didn't plan for this, but we are where we are. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Paulson.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to keep the math straight here right now. But to replace them brand new would be 198,000. We do have sixty, well, 67,000 in IRF already for them. So that cost would be offset by close to $70,000. So that's 130,000. I don't want to spend the money, but on the other hand, if we lost one firefighter or, or there was a situation inside a fire, you, you can't put a cost on this stuff. And I, I know that a couple of the Counselors and Madam Mayor have had these units on and have used them and realize exactly how important they are in a, in a situation. The advent of, of cancer in firefighters, firefighters virtually use these all the time, I think now, when they're in proximity to a fire, just to reduce, help reduce the exposure to cancer causing things. Like I say, I, I'm struggling with, with the cost, but God, I would, I would never forgive myself if something serious happened to a firefighter. If we cheaped out or didn't do the right thing. It comes down to safety is the bottom line. And this is a pretty critical safety department for any community. I don't know who we're going to steal 130,000 from to pay for these.
Well, and just for clarity...
Maybe Wolf's pickup truck, I don't know.
Just for clarity, I, I believe that this is, that is new money. That is, the IRF has already been factored into that, so that would be...
Oh, okay, so the actual cost would be 200...
Correct.
Oh, okay, well, there you go.
Thank you. Were there other questions on this? Okay, I'm curious if, I, I agree with, you know, most people who have spoken that we need to move forward and, and change this equipment. That doesn't make it any easier to find that money, given, you know, the budget constraints that we're already looking at for this year. So I'm wondering if there, you know, if there are opportunities to push out other things that maybe are not as urgently needed for, you know, the safety of the firefighters. And maybe the fire chief could look at if there's any options to be brought forward that could help fund this. I know there's not a lot, you know, in the capital budget or anything like that. But I think that before we, I think we, we likely all want to move forward on this, but I think we need to know if there's other, any ways that we can save at least a portion of those funds. And maybe it's not replacing the truck this year. Maybe it's looking at pushing the fire truck out a year. I think we have to look at all options available and reasonably before we make this decision on how it will be funded. Counsel Solda.
And I agree with our mayor, but I have, do have a question for Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, for people who, in the public, that have questions on what we're doing here, can they submit questions or how do they make contact with us? Because last year we used to be able to ask, they used to be able to, yeah.
CIO?
Madam Mayor, near the end of the agenda, you'll see item F, CF, Public Engagement Next Steps. And that's, at that point in the agenda, it's envisioned Counsel will discuss how to go forward.
Okay, super.
I did note that at the beginning of the meeting as well.
Oh, okay.
That said, we don't have, I don't think we have monitoring of social media for this meeting like we have some, sometimes in the past. So that's something that we can discuss during that section if we want to have a meeting where we are taking input online. I've also been on social media telling, when people are commenting on budget, sending them Davina's email. As, you know, to welcoming them to provide input if people would like to send input for the budget. So I've posted that email many, many times and we'll see if we receive any feedback that way. Okay, so lots of opportunities still for people. Okay. I don't think that was to do with this question, but I think...
It's just other people had questions regarding the fire department and I said, "Come to a meeting," but they're not here.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think you just gave our fire chief marching orders. Go away and tell us how we're going to pay for this.
Yeah, so I mean, I think if, if Counsel agrees on that, and I don't know if there is any way, you know, to take it out of somewhere in the fire budget, but I think we need to reasonably look to see if there is. And I, anywhere, yeah, and, and then move forward that way with more discussions on this.
Forty-five thousand.
Okay. All right. Moving on to the next item. We have, from the Western Vancouver Island Industrial Heritage Society, an email from Ken Rutherford, updating the budget, asking for an additional $20,000. CIO, could you speak to this part? I believe there's not currently any funds in the budget for the train. Could you clarify?
Madam Mayor, there's currently no funds in the draft budget for, there wasn't for SCBA or for rail service. And, and by the discussion you just had at the next, let me clarify this. Did you direct us to put the 198,000 dollars in the budget for, in the draft budget? Or did you want to wait until you get a report from the fire chief?
I think we should wait for a report from the fire chief. I mean, we could make the decision to add it in now if we want to recommend that.
It's working document.
I think we're heading in the same direction regardless, but we'd like to look at options for where it will be funded from first.
Okay, so it won't be in the next draft budget, but you'll get a report from the fire chief?
We won't forget about it.
And on the rail, no, there's nothing in the, in the draft budget right now for rail service. Again, we would need direction from Counsel.
Okay. So are there questions specifically for Ken, who's here? Counsel Corbial.
Well, the actual budget that Mr. Rutherford put together has expenses for a part-time manager and a railway mechanic. And now we're, we're talking about another position. Is there any possibility, Ken, of trying to, I suspect, the manager position, to try to combine the person that does more of the, the planning and the PR with that management position?
So what, after meeting with yourself and the mayor and Counsel Washington, looked at the marketing and, a marketing plan and advertising with a marketing expert that I talked to, one recommended from the city. And basically, there's not adding a person, so, but we would have to pay for a contract with a marketing person to develop a plan and then help us with some of the advertising through the year to make sure we're getting it out to the proper resources. One of the things we found with, with our last experience of operating the train with the manager, didn't have marketing experience that was going to bring in a bigger population of tourists. So we want to rely on the expertise. I don't envision the person that we're going to hire as a part-time manager to have that expertise. And so the budget reflects materials, whether it's brochures and all that kind of stuff besides just the person's cost. So whatever, whatever we need to do to advertise the railroad to and make it a success, that's where that marketing money is. They're not hiring a full-time or a part-time person to look after that, similar to what the McLean Mill had as a person to look after weddings and all that kind of marketing proposal, so.
If I could, Madam Mayor, so did you talk to, to somebody who's actually interested and, and could do it for, for the price that you put forth?
The person that I was talking to that gave me help with putting an extra $15,000 into the budget would be more of the person that does the plan, not necessarily a person that would do some of the finer detail. So we would have to look into how we would handle that. Now, with a full plan, maybe our manager then would be able to implement some of that. May have to have some help with some other resources on as-needed basis. But we'd have the contract to develop a good strategy and a good plan moving forward is the beginning of it.
Thank you, and I appreciate that recognition and agree with you very much that the person you're going to get for the train manager is not going to be, you know, is not going to be strong enough in marketing. You're unlikely to find somebody with those two skill sets. And I think it's really important that we recognize and put value on that none of this will likely be successful if you don't have the right marketing and the right plan. So I think those do need to be too separate, you know, whether it's a contractor or an employee. But we can't rely on finding someone who will have both of those skill sets because I would think that would be very unlikely.
Since we operated the, the mill and the train a few years ago, technical safety has, Technical Safety BC has come out with more regulations on the operation. So whoever we have, hires a part-time manager is going to be more dedicated to, to regulation to make sure all the training is done properly so that our assessments from Technical BC aren't going to be out of whack because we haven't done things properly. So that's going to be a strict requirement for our managers, the, the technical safety side of things.
Thank you. Are there more questions on this? Okay, I have more questions. We, how many runs does this envision? I know that we had that in our original presentation, but I don't...
Off the top of my head, I've, I've got it over there. But I think it's, was it 44 days of operation and something like 162 runs? Something in that range.
Sure. And all the steam train?
All the steam train, based on our experience in the past, that whenever we've had, whether it was the bigger or the small diesel engine on there, people came looking for the steam experience and, because that's how it was marketed. And they said, "We'll come back another time." And whether they came back, we don't know, but it was not a draw to have. There are a lot of railroads out there that market on the, the running of riding in a train and it's not necessarily a steam train. We market uniqueness of the steam train and we want to provide that opportunity to the passengers.
Okay. I think one of my concerns with the budget as we have it right now is it does, you know, obviously almost solely rely on, on city funds. And over the, we've met a few times and, and the message that we've kind of tried to consistently bring forward from the city is that we don't want taxpayers to be funding, you know, just about all of this. And so we've talked about trying to find sponsorships, trying to find, you know, more fundraising opportunities. And yet, you know, we've come back with a large budget mostly funded by the city. And I do think the budget is well put together, but what we do seem to be missing is those other revenue sources. And I don't know how we get to that. But I think that a challenge is, you know, that we really are just back where, back where we started. We haven't found other revenue opportunities for this.
I think one of the things that in putting the budget together is the unknown of how many passengers we're going to have. So based on 4,500 passengers, it's, comes up with a number that the city, I've asking the city for it, $170,000. If we can utilize some good marketing and, and get the resources out there so that there is a surplus at the end of the year, obviously that's going to reduce the future budgets. But because that we're a nonprofit society and don't have the pockets to cover a shortfall, we're not in business that we can go to the bank and take a loan, we had to be somewhat on the cautious side in what we're asking for. If, if we do well, then that's going to make a, a next year's budget ask different because we'll have the opportunity to build on that resource. And we're only running a short run this year. We're not going all the way... We're not going all the way to the mill, so we're not offering a long train ride. We can't offer or ask for a high revenue source from the public. So it is a tough position. I understand the city's position on there and I don't know definitive answer to tell you that we can vote and we can get lots of sponsorship dollars because we're starting out from scratch and we can't go to the bank. You're the bank and we don't want to come back at the end of the year.
We don't want to be the bank.
We don't, and we don't want to come back at the end of the year and say we're $50,000 short after asking for $170,000 either. So it's, it's the best we can do.
Okay. And what is the current status of the steam train?
Technical safety has granted us permission to put the tubes in. We've got that resolved that we were having issues with the inspector to try to move forward, so expected this week for the volunteer boilermakers to be back and starting to put the tubes in the boiler. So that's a major step forward and I would think it should be ready to go this year. No problem at all.
Okay. Counselor Soltta.
Thank you for the presentation. Regarding a cost per ride, to take that steam train out, how much does it cost just to do that short run?
What, in putting the revenue side together, it was $9.40 average per passenger based on a fee for adult, senior, youth, and child at different rates, but it averaged out to about $9.40 per rider.
So what's the total cost to take that steam, not without, with the, without the passengers? How much does it cost?
The expense.
Yes, sorry. Thank you. The expense, thank you. I'm glad she's reading my mind.
It's, again, partly an unknown, unknown that we're going to be re-bricking the boiler to burn diesel fuel versus bunker C. So the carbon footprint will be much less, probably, I understand, one of the biggest sources of, of carbon, city-owned pollutant in town, if you want to call it that, that train, because it does make a lot of smoke. So we're going to make, convert it to burn diesel fuel. The diesel fuel is twice the cost of bunker C, but we reduce the carbon footprint. So one thing, we haven't run it before with diesel fuel, so we don't know what the consumption's going to be. So all I can do is say it's going to take the same amount of fuel at twice the cost. Hopefully, the plan will work out that it will be less costly. But again, we're getting into new unknown territory there as far as what the cost is. So I haven't put all those costs together and tell you that strictly without revenue what the cost per run is. I can find that out if you'd like, give you information.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Paulson.
Just a quick question, Ken. I know in years gone by, and this has nothing to do with the steam, we actually had some contracts with BCIT for, for training. Is there an opportunity to continue that on, or is there a reason why we-
They, they have dropped that program.
Oh, okay.
So it's not.
That's a simple answer.
And that was, and again, that was a revenue source for the society. This is, I provided all the conductors to do the training and everything's own, was a source for the society, but no, it's not there anymore.
Okay. Counselor Poon.
Thank you. I know you, you mentioned converting to diesel fuel. Is there any scope to convert to a steam electric?
No, I don't think electric, electric drive would work with a 1929 vintage vehicle.
Because there, there are examples of steam electric locomotives, right?
Steam-powered generator and, but the, the electric motor to drive the, the side rods on a steam engine, I'm not familiar with that technology.
Okay. Any other questions or further direction we want to give back? I heard the comment, "It's a work in progress." I don't think it's a work in progress unless we give direction of, you know, how we want to move forward and if we want to see changes. If not, we're really just mulling it over still. So is there any direction that we would like to give or more information, options we'd like to see, or are we going to just consider to, continue to discuss it at our next meeting? Okay. If there's any questions that, or, you know, information that would help to be brought back, this is the time to ask for it. If not, we're going to be coming back to the same budget for consideration at our next meeting. Counselor Cordial.
Well, I for one want to see this work, and I know, Ken, you've probably sharpened your pencil likely as much as you can, but if there's any room to fine-tune this, I'd appreciate it because we will get to a point in the very near future where we say yea or nay, and as I say, I'd love to say yea, and I think the closer we get to something that's more manageable for our, for our budget, the better. And for all, I know you've probably done the best you can, but if you could improve it in any way, that would be much appreciated.
Well, I'll, I'll have a look at it, but there are so many unknowns there and, let's say, the inability to fund a shortfall is, really makes me nervous about, about asking.
Yeah, and I think that's an important consideration, that it is the first year looking at it and, and, you know, we know you can't fund a shortfall. You had presented an option of $75,000 if we wanted, I believe it was $75,000, if we wanted to look at special events only. I'm curious for that option, if there was actually a budget made up for that, because I'm looking at this budget and thinking a lot of these things are not per-run costs, they're hard costs that you're going to have for the year regardless. So is that $75,000 for special events only actually doable, or was that just a number that was, like, because I don't, I don't think there's $100,000 of things we could reduce here. There's, you know, $41,000 in fuel only, there's, so like, if we were to run it fewer times, how would we drop the costs, potentially $100,000?
Without going back with my paperwork to see what the actual number was, there was three options that I think we, I gave you. One was to run it complete, one was special runs, and one was just fixed maintenance, which I think was about $30,000 or $40,000. So if we're only going to run on special occasions, we still have to do the training, we still have to do the certification of the, or the maintenance of the railroad to get it certified to be able to run the train the short distance. Then the fuel cost, if we're only running 15 or 20 runs, the fuel goes way down compared to what our cost is to run 160 runs. The, some of the labor costs are going to be far less, maintenance would be less, the cost of the engineer is less. We've still got some marketing. We probably wouldn't do as big a marketing plan because there's no point in marketing to the tourist industry when you're only going to have a few weekends where you're running a special train. That would be more for the local population, like the Santa Run or a Halloween run or a summer steam special, or something along the lines that you market to the local people, maybe the center of the island, and you get that, that business. You're not going to put a full $25,000 into a marketing plan for, for five events, so, and say three or four runs each event. I just couldn't see that need to spend that kind of money. So without going through each line item and trying to break out where that comes from, those are some of the bigger items that we've seen.
Thank you. Counselor Paulson?
Just, I concur with Counselor Cordial. I really like to see this run. I think it's part of our identity, but I think probably it's going to be another few weeks or a month before. I have a full picture of the context of the budget overall, and that may be where we come back to you and say, "Well, here's what we're going to allocate." And, you know, you develop a, a project or within that dollar value. And I mean, I think that applies to all city departments. I mean, we, we will have to have a look at the whole context and say, "Look at, you know, jigging it, here's what we can afford in each department." So I'm just not quite there with the snapshot or the overall picture yet. I'm kind of, I'm still uncomfortable 5.9%, but.
I fully understand. I don't envy your position, Ron. It's a tough job. All we can do is give you what, to make a successful venture, there's the number. If we can work it, great. If not, it'll probably never run again. So not to put any pressure on you.
No pressure.
(laughing). (inaudible) don't push it up.
Thank you. Counselor Washington.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the report, Ken. Man, if we could just get somebody to sponsor that fuel and maybe sponsor our insurance, it would change things immensely. But again, if it's not going to, if they can't see it, it's hard for them, it's hard to, for any marketing to go in and say, "This could be yours for $41,000," or "This could be yours."
In, in some respects, we're already behind the ball now with marketing. Most publications have gone out for this year's stuff, so we're already behind the eight ball in that. And, and like you say, until we can be firm on what we're going to offer, we can't go to anybody and say, "Would you like to sponsor a train ride?" or whatever it might be, and try to reduce those costs. Once we get in there and we can do that, then we can come back to council with maybe some repayment at the end of the year. That would be, that would be the optimum that we could do, but, and then, or put that profit into next year's venture, and the run to McLean's Mill would be a reduced cost because that's the bigger cost for the city than this year's.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any further questions on this topic? Okay. Thank you very much for the information you provided.
Look forward to your report.
Okay. Okay. Moving on, we have the CAO, Acting Director of Finance, to provide a review of the 2020 capital plans.
Madam Mayor, if you wanted to recess, this would be a good time. If not, we can carry on.
Yeah, we could recess. Okay, recess. Five minutes. (inaudible). Okay. I think we are, it's okay, we have it all electronically, it's okay. Okay. 2020 capital budget. So council, I think the intended just to review the items in the capital budget, and we have gone through these already, so it's an additional, have we? Someone correct me, I think we've gone through these already. So just an additional opportunity to ask questions, make sure we have an understanding of where things are being funded from, and anything else. So CAO, you can lead us through this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to ask the Acting Director of Finance to join me at the lecture, and I'll sit here so you can work from there. We'll tag-team this, and we'll bring up different managers to speak to different projects. If council has questions, just stop us, please. To start, I think it's helpful if Ms. McCauley orients us to the document and tells us, tells us what we're looking at.
Okay, so as we go through, just to highlight, the top, your strategic priorities are going to be labeled in blue. So above every year, you're going to see that blue bar, and that's going to be your strategic priorities. And as you move to the green, that's going to be your remaining non-strat projects. Each column represents either a reserve or a different fund. So we have operating, the operating column. When you see the operating reserve column, that means it's a carry-forward reserve from a prior year. So maybe in a prior budget, we've reserved those funds, and we've carried forward that project into this year, or it's come out of a reserve surplus fund. So the remainder, if we want to scoot across so we can see the different reserves here, so we have our different reserves. Water operating comes out of our current water operating budget, so that would be funded by our water and sewer fees. When you see it coming out of the reserve, that's from our infrastructure reserve fund. The rest of the, we have another category as well that is sometimes funded through different things, and we've tried to note in there if it is. So if it's a carbon, if it's funded through a carbon, you'll use, usually find that in the other column, or if we've had donations from the community, it's also going to be noted in that other column.
So Madam Mayor, working from the top down, as Rosalind told us, that the blue items are directly out of the city's strategic plan. And the first one is a community safety building, and it's, it's council's vision to develop a community safety building somewhere in the Uptown District. And we've budgeted $150,000. We envision leasing a building, not purchasing at this point, but we budgeted $150,000 for renovation to suit our needs of that building. And this is speculative, if you like. I believe it's similar to the cost that Campbell River experienced when they, but I could, but I could be wrong on that. The money's coming from policing reserve, reserves, so money that we don't spend just stays in those reserves.
Campbell River was $80,000, but they moved into a building that probably was in significantly better shape than what we probably will be looking at with our current stock of buildings. That's all.
Any further questions on that item?
Any questions on this? And of course, right now, this is largely, I mean, a lot of it would be unknown, given that-
That's right.
-we don't know what building or anything yet.
And again, as Rosalind told us, that doesn't affect taxation in 2020. Those are funds that were taxed in previous years and unspent. There were surplus basically in the policing, and we've held them in a reserve.
Okay. Seeing no questions?
The next project down, Third Avenue upgrades, we had budgeted, I believe, $400,000 for that. And as we told you earlier tonight, our engineering estimates show $900,000 cost, no, sorry, I think 1.3 for that. Will F. Takama can speak to the project now, if you like, and there is a report with an engineer's report attached coming to the next meeting of council next Monday.
I think my preference would be to wait until we have the full report so that we can have more of an informed conversation on it.
Okay. You can also see there, there's funds coming from water and sewer as well, so while we are doing that project, we would undertake some other work as well. And the city welcoming sign, $150,000 earmarked from operating. We haven't yet, council hasn't yet determined or given direction on what the sign looks like, what the size of it is, what the location will be, if there'll be more than one sign. So we think $150,000 is a safe budget estimate, again, subject to whatever council wants to tell us to do.
Counselor Soltta.
I love the idea about the city welcoming sign, but just to take some budget down, I'm just throwing this at the rest of council. Why can't we put so much away in the kitty and then maybe next year, you know, like, you know, put halfway into-
Do it in phases.
Yes, and do it in phases, and then when we have the full amount of the money, then we can go ahead with the sign. It's in the budget. I'm just throwing this at council, trying to look at ways of cutting some things back. So I just thought I'd throw it out there.
I think we can do whatever we want to do. If council wishes to do that, we certainly can. That said, I think, CAO, maybe you could update us on how do we actually get to a point where we will have a rough idea of what this costs? I know that as a council, we've looked at other signs that have been done in other communities, and, you know, I think we all have a rough idea of what we're willing to spend, and, but how do we actually get there? So what's your plan?
So we've started some work on this. We've actually engaged the Chamber of Commerce to do, basically, to capture the work that's already been done on welcoming signs. There's been some other studies and work done. So they'll, they're working right now on a report for us that shows work that they've done, work that's been done by the city and charrette and that kind of thing. When that report's done, it's cost-effective for us, first, by the way, to have them do it for us. When that's done, it'll come to council with a staff covering report to say, "Look, this is, this is what everything that's in this welcome sign file," just so you're fully aware and updated, and you can give direction on what next steps are, and next steps might be. You might, that report will also include signage from other communities on the island and a few from around the province. So with that report, we're hopeful that you're able to say, "We like component this," or "Component that," or "That" from different signs. So go engage a designer that has, has these four elements in it, and that will help us sharpen our budget projections as well.
Will that report give us an idea of what other communities have spent as well?
Yeah, we've asked for spending as well.
So I think that would be the appropriate time for us to determine if we want to, you know, cut the budget in half, for instance. To do it right now, I think likely is just, you know, not an informed exercise. So I think when we have that report in front of us, we can determine what an adequate budget is and if we want to move forward with the project at that point. know, cut the budget in half, for instance. To do it right now, I think likely is just, you know, not an informed exercise. So I think when we have that report in front of us, we can determine what an adequate budget is, and if we want to move forward with the project at that point.
Thank you.
Okay.
Moving down to operating capital projects, administration, computer equipment replacement, and server upgrade. Mr. Pellic can speak to those, if you like. They're coming from Equipment Replacement Reserve Fund.
I think we have heard about those projects. Are there follow-up questions on them? Okay. Sure, come on forward then. You need to use a microphone, so they can hear you.
The aspect of server upgrade, refresh five-year cycle shouldn't actually be there. That's been requested to have been moved to 2023.
Wonderful. Well, there's not, unfortunately, because that's not coming out of general revenue. The only question that I have for the Acting Director of Finance is, all of these things that are, that are listed in IRF, can we assume that the full amount has been IRF'd for them? Or are there shortages that, like, I know in the past, we've been concerned about the health of the IRF fund, and we've had it presented to us, you know, "We need $60,000 for this. Only $40,000 has been saved in IRF," and so we're drawing an additional $20,000 that wasn't saved.
So when we have made the budgets for the current IRF funds in there, most of it has been drawn from the actual IRF schedule, where we've calculated what the actual cost is. Right off the top of my head, I don't think any of the costs that are in that column right now are above what is in our IRF fund. When we go through all of our transport vehicles, we are directly going off our IRF, and we check that with some of the managers on a yearly basis to see if they're in line, and we adjust the IRF fund and then put it into the budget. So everything in there is directly from the IRF schedule.
So I think just as a matter of practice for us, if there's ever anything that, you know, we are looking to spend more than we've contributed and planned and budgeted for, that, that, we should be told about that, so that we're aware. And then, everything else we can assume is, you know, what we were anticipating along the way.
Perfect.
Okay. So assuming there's no questions about the IT?
So we'll make a change on that, that 2023 project as well.
Awesome. That's great. Okay. Moving on to the fire department.
Madam Mayor, I see the Dodge Calibre up there that we told you earlier tonight is moved to 2022, right? So we'll delete that from that line.
Which?
Under Administration.
Oh, yes, that's right. And no amount in there.
What happens is in our working document, we leave it there, and we put a note to say it's been moved forward. And then, in this case, the note's gone, and the car's still there. I think that's what happened. So Fire Department, you've spoken about these things. Do you want to, do you have more questions or questions?
Are there any more questions on this? Counselor Corbial.
Well, I think we've already pointed out that we're all probably behind buying the new air packs and wondering how we fund it. And I, I look at the jaws of life, or whatever the new term is for it, and I almost got the impression that was a nice to do, not absolutely have to do. So, you know, I would hope that potentially, that could be put off for a year or more, if at all possible.
Yeah, being that the, the fire engine has not been released for an RFP, there's an ability to configure the space to host the existing tools that we have, perhaps. It's something that we can certainly look at anyway, and bring it back at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. CAO?
So, Madam Mayor, under Transportation Services, the two vehicles that we spoke about earlier in the question-and-answer portion, I'd just like to, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to scroll down to 2021 on Transportation Services, because there's quite a lengthy list of vehicles in 2021. And the reason for that is that those vehicles in 2021, some of them were scheduled to be replaced in 2020, some in previous years, and they've been moved forward, as Wilf told us, in the budget. So our staff are very diligent at not replacing vehicles that don't need to be replaced. And you see some of those are 2004, 2005, 2006. And we've pushed those back further out into the budget, because there's, there's life work left in those. We don't need to replace them yet. So we've had IRF contributions for them. We're continuing to run them until we get into a situation where it doesn't make financial sense or operational sense to operate them. So I just wanted to point out to you the, the really long list of vehicles that we're pushing forward year to year, but eventually, some of those need to be replaced. Eventually, they all need to be replaced. And this year, if we could scroll back up, there's two vehicles that were due to be replaced this year, that staff think it's in our best interest to replace. If you have specific questions on those, I'm sure Wilf's happy to answer them.
Okay. Questions? No questions?
Thank you. Road construction and sewer storm and water projects. So these, I'll ask Wilf to come up and speak to these.
Let's see, we made somewhat of an effort to combine the road pieces with the storm and the water and the sewer pieces. I think there's still a couple of loose ends, a little bit. As you'll see below, there's some storm, a couple of storm pieces there. I think ideally, we intended may still in the process bring those up, so they're all in the same line. So a few projects that we're proposing for 2020 are completion kind of of the Sixth Avenue corridor, so the, the one remaining block on the north end from Argyle to Angus. So the little terminology there, the PTP, that just means prior to paving and water and storm on that section. Yeah, so I think we're populated across there, except for down below, where you'll see the, the storm portion of that. And I don't recall offhand what the total project cost is.
So Wilf, in that line, we see 110 per paving, correct? And then if we go over, we'll see an entry for water and an entry for sewer? Is that what you're saying? Is that, they're 80 and 125?
Yeah, possibly. It just might just be the way the funding is. I don't, I don't have the breakdown of the, of all the components in front of me, but basically, the, the total cost is to the right of that portion. Yeah. So it's a little easier if they are all together, or if they're all completely separate. So I don't have the individual breakdowns in front of me.
Madam Mayor, we're working with working financial documents. We're trying to get council a document where it's all in one, in one line. We haven't made that transition yet. It's just from our working documents to a presentable document.
I think this is much clearer than in previous years, where we've had, you know, different parts of the same project broken out into different sections. You know, when I look at this, I can see that the Melrose Street project is $1.04 million. The only thing that I, if I'm understanding correctly, there's $480,000 from gas tax and $560,000 for that project specifically from sewer. We don't see an amount specifically for paving. Obviously, there is paving in that project. Would that just be coming from the gas tax portion?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Are there any questions on this? Counselor Corbial?
Just out of curiosity, Wilf, of all the projects that were budgeted for last year, how successful were you at completing all of them?
Again, I don't have, I don't have last year's list in front of me. I'd say there are some, some of the smaller water and sewer projects, I know we had identified, and they're still budgeted for, we still plan to do them. There was a couple of replacements of sewer in lanes and things like that. So the larger projects are, are complete or even underway, as we're, as we're still working on, like 16th Avenue.
Seeing no other questions? Thank you. The traffic upgrades?
Yeah. Do you want to go through all the road construction, or just move on to?
I think if there's no questions on the road construction. We've heard previously about the projects.
Yeah. And traffic upgrades, we're trying to, and you'll see in the five-year plan, we've got money under replacement of signal controllers. We've got seven. They essentially have a life of about seven years. And this year, we've so far been okay and not gotten ourselves into trouble. But the actual cost to replace a signal controller is about $25,000 or $26,000. Our electrical contractors have said, "We need to have a spare on hand," because we could, yeah, could be in trouble with, with not having that. So that, that's their, their intention, is to keep a spare on hand, use that in the following year, keep, keep buying one each year, and keep replacing one as we go.
Okay. Any questions on that? Counselor Paulson?
I just see you referred the 10th and Roger. And that 10th and Roger signal was out of order for three or four days.
We've had quite a few issues with it, yeah.
Yeah. So I gather that this is a result of smuggling problems there.
Yeah, exactly. Those storm projects that are identified there, they're actually captured, or they can be combined with the ones above. We do have a number of projects identified for relining of storm mains. They're showing as 120 each. It's more of a total capital cost of $600,000 to do those five jobs. How they line up exactly for each one will remain to be seen once, once that job is tendered.
Are there questions on that work? Counselor Corbial?
Just a question. What is relining?
Basically, it's a process whereby you don't dig it up. You work from manhole to manhole, shoot a sock through, through it, and by, I think, a UV process, harden it, and then go in and cut out the, the connections. So, yeah, it's, it's fairly expensive, but not near as expensive as, as some of these deep, deep crossings. So saves having to dig them up.
Okay. Perfect. No other questions? Down to the Works Other section. Oh, McLean Mill, Dan. CAO, would you like to speak to this today?
Sure, Madam Mayor. I know one way we can stop speaking about it.
I don't know if that'll happen.
I'm starting to think you enjoy speaking about it.
I sure don't.
So we, as you know, we budgeted $233,000 in, in 2019. Much of that was reserves from, or unallocated contingency from 2018. And we went to tender on the project, and we weren't, the budget price, or the tender price is obviously considerably higher. So it's back in the budget with that $233, some of which has been expended, obviously, and a further, looks like $140,000 in gas taxes to, to get to where we think the price of that project will be when we tender it. Council directed us to re-tender within six months, I think, or something like that, last fall. So we're holding to see what council wants to do budget-wise before we re-tender.
Okay. Are there questions on this? Okay. Okay. City Works Facility Relocation.
Wilf asked me if he could speak about that one.
I guess, Madam Mayor, to reiterate from the previous meeting, where we brought a report from McGill, the result of that report was to start moving down the road of relocating, if that's council's wish. We would need some money to do some preliminary engineering and also some assessment of sites and that sort of thing.
Okay. Counselor Washington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next process we're gonna do, that's in order to see if there's any funding out there available.
That would be part of it, yeah.
So if we don't do this, there's no, we'll, we'll never know if there's a grant or anything out there.
Correct. And I think, yeah, I think you need to do this in order to even be eligible for grants.
Counselor Poon?
Thank you. How does the relocation of the site fit in with our strategic plan?
That's a good question.
I would say, Madam Mayor, continuation of delivery of quality services. If we're gonna continue to serve, to serve the public day-to-day, and if we're gonna be able to respond in emergencies, we need our $10 million worth of equipment and, and other, other stock and employees to be in a safe, dry location. Nobody wants to have to spend money on something like this. We've got a city works yard that, if it doesn't fall down in an earthquake, which it probably will, the report says, it'll be underwater. And it's a fact of life. And we can't mitigate the tsunami risk. And I suggest it's prudent for us to get ourselves that project ready to the point where we're eligible for grants when grant funding does come available. Otherwise, at some point, we'll be paying a larger share ourselves.
I guess I don't really understand why this is a priority now and it hasn't. So this has been a risk for, forever. You know, why now, at a time where we are looking at a larger-than-average budget increase, rather than in years where we have had a lot more flexibility with our budget? Why is it now a priority?
So it was, the point was raised, raised after Exercise Coastal Response, which the scenario for that was a 9.0 magnitude Cascadia Fault Subduction earthquake with a 20-meter tsunami following, which is the risk that we're exposed to. And in the follow-up of that, or the after-action review, it was recommended in the report from the province that we should investigate the location of the city's works yard relative to those two risks, earthquake and tsunami. So in 2018, I believe, Wilf, council allocated $30,000 to, to investigate the location and the structures relative to those risks. We retained McGill Engineering. They've given us that report. We only just received that report January.
Just before Christmas.
And that, yeah. So I apologize for not having it in the draft budget sooner, or having the conversation sooner. We didn't, we just got the report. And we didn't want to sit on it and miss the budget cycle. So that's why we brought it forward now.
Counselor Soltta?
So this is not the first time this has come up to council. In the past, this has been brought forward about the, the works yard being in the tsunami zone. And in 1992, March 10th, did you see the UMA Engineering Limited did a study on this tsunami inundation zone study? Have you seen that?
Are we, are we asking you if in 1992, on March 10th, you saw that report?
I guess not. I guess not. No, I'm just saying.
Could you let us know? Please answer that question.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just kind of curious to know if it has been brought forth to the city. There was one done. And there was, there was discussion in the past regarding moving the works yard up to where the, is it the school works yard is, at one point, when it was up for sale? And, yeah, maybe in school. I just wanted to give you a little bit of history on that, you know. Anyways, I'll shut up. That's fine.
I know that McGill did, did review all the, the other previous reports.
And Counselor Corbial?
So out of curiosity, we've had some tsunami warnings, and been given a bit of time to do something. What did, what was the reaction at the, the works yard? Where, was equipment moved, or anything like that?
So the 3:00 AM, Madam Mayor, the 3:00 AM, February of 2019?
January.
Or January, whenever it was, that was based on an earthquake out of Alaska, I believe. I think the timeframe for that potential wave to hit Port Alberni was a number of hours later. So there was quite a bit of warning. The experts in, in the exercise are saying this will happen quite close off the coast of Port Alberni, and it's like 15 minutes. So in 15 minutes of that were to happen in the middle of the night, there would be no opportunity for, for people to, to get there, move equipment, or really do anything.
Was equipment moved at the last warning?
Yes, it was. Yeah. Yeah, there was quite a few people that came in, once they had looked after their own families.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Arrow View demolition, we've discussed earlier, is just a placeholder at this point, and not impacting taxation. Parks, Penny Lane Bridge replacement, I know we discussed last year, assuming it is just one year worse.
That's the spirit, Madam Mayor. Yes, so we have earmarked the $25,000 for bridge replacement based on safety concerns. Yes.
For sure. Okay. Any questions on that? Bridge? Council actually went for a walk over it last year, just happened to during the coldest night of the year walk. So I think that was right around budget time, and not sure if we were.
time and not sure if we were, uh, if we, it made us agree with our decision to not fund it or kind of feel like we should take it back, but, um, not surprised to see it back this year.
Madam Mayor, we'd love to, uh, the Parks Recreation and Heritage staff would love to play a game of frisbee golf with you, and we can all enjoy Penny Lane Bridge together.
Wonderful. And Victoria Key Shelter Project.
So this, so this is five thousand dollars rolled over from twenty nineteen, and the Rotary Club has committed, has committed the other fifteen thousand dollars.
I think we committed fifteen thousand last year.
So, so a portion, uh, has been spent, and so this is the, the remaining five.
And the project's scope is still the same.
Correct.
Cost is still the same, okay. Um, and Johnston Road planter box installation.
Uh, so, so twenty thousand dollars was approved in twenty nineteen. Uh, we spent four thousand, uh, in twenty nineteen, and we've got a three-month waiting period on the boxes themselves. So that's why we haven't spent the full amount, because we have no boxes, boxes yet to spend it on.
Okay. Any questions on this?
I actually don't really care much for flowers. I like trees. I think we should plant more, uh, this is, you know, not my area to be involved in, but I think we should plant more green shrubs that don't need to be redone constantly.
Well, Madam Mayor, the VC Hydro re-greening project's grant is due January thirty-one, and I will ensure that we apply for it.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, any questions on that? Nope. Okay, um, McLean Mill Capital Projects, thirty thousand dollars.
Correct. So similar to previous years, uh, the city of Port Alberni's contribution would be thirty, and then the, uh, ninety would be divided between the Parks Canada Cost Sharing Grant of sixty and then the ACRD of thirty. So we have, uh, as you'll see at my, my monthly report coming up next week, that our, uh, our twenty nineteen grant finished on time and, uh, under budget. And so that grant is complete, and we've already submitted our application for the twenty-twenty period. So we're just waiting to hear on that.
Great. Okay, seeing no questions. Um, moving down to Aquatic Center Pool Repairs.
So we're coming up on fifty-three years of, of operation. Of course, we're still the, uh, the oldest non-retrofitted, uh, swimming pool, I believe in Canada now, which is quite an interesting tagline.
That's a title.
We can, uh, we can invest in. Uh, so this hundred thousand dollars is a placeholder for, uh, items that every annual shutdown, which is typically in the summer months, uh, that we do things like refurbish pumps, rewind motors, uh, handle some tiling, masonry work, that sort of thing, uh, around the facility. So it's a bit of a standing number, which will evolve. Of course, the, the older the, the facility gets, of course, the more we need to invest. But at this stage, uncomfortable with maintaining the hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that? Counselor Poon?
Thanks. Uh, what's the history of, um, the repair works that have taken place over the last few years, and how much do we normally spend?
Um, Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to bring back a report if council wishes, uh, outlining in whatever detail, uh, you like for, for, uh, previous shutdowns, if you care.
I, I don't think that's necessary, but, I mean, just the ballpark.
Uh, so it would be, be similar to what we have there. That's what our, our numbers are based on, what the, the typical spending has been over the, the, uh, past number of years.
Okay, okay. Moving down, uh, the Curling Club Ice Plant Replacement. We allocated that forty thousand a few years ago. Is that something that is happening, or should we unallocate it?
I would, I would love to think that, uh, the allocation will, will stick the score on the change from previous years. So we did commit to it in February twenty eighteen. Uh, the Curling Club was unsuccessful in, uh, in grant opportunities. And so one of the changes we've made is actually making a commitment for an additional agreement to show that the city of Port Alberni is keen to continue their relationship with the Curling Club in hopes that the Curling Club can leverage that commitment from the city to their grant funders. So I haven't heard at this stage, uh, if it's been successful or what the timeline is, but our hope is that, uh, with those, that length of agreement, it will be successful.
Not additional funds, though?
Correct. Just that additional time that we're, that we're happy to be involved with the Curling Club.
Okay, great. Are there any questions on that? Okay. Echo Park Fieldhouse Furnace Number Two. Did we do furnace number one last year?
Uh, I, yes, we did.
There was a furnace project last year.
Yes, so after, after furnace number one comes furnace number two, and, uh, so this, uh, this furnace is at its end of life, so the, the cost represented there, uh, is that the, the parts are no longer available. So we're at a spot where we need to replace.
Okay. Questions? Okay, and Echo Park Fieldhouse Security Cameras.
So, uh, obviously increasing, uh, public safety, uh, and also an ability to protect our infrastructure is what, uh, what we install cameras for.
Okay. Are there any questions on that? Seeing none. Um, could I just interject for a second? Um, CAO, we funded last year, um, a second round of funding, twenty-five thousand dollars for the security enhancement program, um, and I don't think that second round of funding actually went out advertised. Um, if we could just follow up on that, because I know there were, there was a lot of people online asking when it would be coming out. We had committed that that round of funding would be available to commercial and residential. Um, and I think we, we had just allocated the first round around the time that we, um, because the first program took a, quite a long time to get moving.
We'll check into it.
That'd be great. Thank you. Okay. Where were we here? Small Equipment.
So the small equipment includes items such as a suction cup attachment for a forklift. So when we're replacing, uh, the, the glass, the tempered pa- panels of glass on either ice sheet, we'd have the ability to, um, use suction cup, suction cup attachment, which would, uh, reduce the impact on our staff. So less, uh, manual labor. Um, each panel weighs hundreds of pounds, so the ability to, to use, uh, machine as opposed to just, uh, uh, human power is, is ideal. Um, that, that number also includes, uh, an ice edger as well as an air conditioning unit for the server room to ensure that, uh, the technology is kept at a reduced temperature.
Okay, are there questions on this?
Uh, my only question is that, um, we often see these types of projects, um, in Parks and Rec coming under general, where in other, um, departments, more projects seem to come under IRFP. Um, are we maybe not, I mean, I, you have a large department, but I'm wondering if some of these things we should be, um, are they new equipment, or should we be contributing in IRFP and funding them through IRFP potentially in the future? Um, yeah, just a thought.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to review with our finance department to see where we've got opportunities to look at IRFP, absolutely.
Okay, perfect. Okay, and multiplex, uh, replace the warehouse or lighting?
Yeah, so, uh, in twenty nineteen, a hundred and ten thousand dollars was approved. And so as we discussed, uh, this time last year, uh, during budget, was that we would spend ten thousand dollars in research and, because the technology moves so quickly with things like lighting, um, to build a plan that's suitable at the time where we're, uh, where we're looking to replace, and then rolling over the remaining hundred thousand dollars for, in twenty-twenty, to complete the project.
Okay, perfect. Are there any questions on that? Counselor?
So a hundred thou will get it done?
Uh, that is the hope. We haven't, uh, distributed the RFP at this stage, but we have been in touch with various, uh, contractors and suppliers to see if that's an option. So, uh, we're still waiting for final word that a hundred thousand will get the job complete.
And that comes out of carbon tax, is that right?
Uh, yes.
Is it the note? Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, get rid of those metal halide lights.
Okay, and the clock tower, um, which I, I think we probably don't need to go into , uh, much conversation on the clock tower today if we're gonna get a report in the future, um, kind of reviewing the project. Except that it looks like it's two hundred and fifty thousand. Okay.
And I would defer to, uh, CAO play on that.
Okay. Are there any questions from council on that right now, or are we okay to wait until we have a report on the full project? Okay. I'm seeing okay to wait. Wonderful, thank you. Uh, okay, and that, I believe, is all of the twenty-twenty projects, I think? Oh, water.
Water?
Are there projects there? Oh, yeah, there are, just not funded from general. Okay. Counsel, are there any questions on the waterworks projects? Okay, seeing no questions on the waterworks projects. Any questions on the sewer projects outside of that very large number that we'll have a report on next week? Okay, seeing none. That brings us to the end of the twenty-twenty capital. That was easy. Okay.
It's only five more committees of the whole to cover it up.
That's right, we'll be there. Okay, so this brings us to the point in our, um, council meeting where we have an opportunity for public, um, input, if any members, if any members of the public would like to ask questions. Okay, seeing nobody getting up at, wanting to ask questions. Um, we, I think the next op- or this opportunity is for us to have a quick discussion about, um, public engagement going forward and what council is, um, what we would like to see. There's been mention of potentially, um, having an opportunity for more of an E-Town Hall, um, type meeting or for questions to be asked through social media. Okay, maybe CAO would like to, uh, talk about next steps.
Madam Mayor, um, we, we've put a lot of information in front of you. Thank you for your patience, um, at the end of last year, and now we've walked through the capital. Um, pending any more questions from council. It's really time for council to tell us where you want to go. You, um, either tell us what you want to modify in the draft budget or tell us how you want to, um, if you want to, and how you want to engage, um, the, the public. So, um, if you want to do an E-Town Hall, for example, we could do that. Davina's got a bit of a presentation keyed up, teed up, so maybe I'll stop talking and let Davina lead this.
Uh, actually, um, Madam Mayor, the, uh, slide is on the screen. Um, as the CAO has mentioned, we've, we've undertaken a number of steps to get to where we are this evening and had, had several meetings thus far. Um, so looking for some direction as to, um, where we go from here in regards to public engagement. Um, any other amendments that, that council wants to see at this point? Um, as of now, um, the next committee of the whole scheduled meeting is February the eighteenth, but we can schedule as many other meetings in whatever format that council, uh, would like to see those. So, so at this point, really looking for some more input from council as to the, the public piece of this.
Okay. Um, how would council like to move forward? I certainly think we want another, uh, meeting before, um, February eighteenth. Um, CAO?
Madam Mayor, I'm wondering if council wants to, as you say, have another meeting, um, get the budget further refined, and then take that to the public and say, hey, did we get this right? Or do you want to take input first and see where, where, um, public priorities are, and then make your changes to the budget based on that?
Counsel? Counselor Corbial?
I'm just wondering, would it be possible to do something similar to what we as a council did, where we went over the budget, came up with questions, sent them in, and then, you know, I thought what we did today was, um, saved a lot of time, and, uh, we got, uh, quite a bit accomplished in a fairly short period of time. So maybe, maybe citizens could have that same opportunity to send the questions in, and you can filter them out if they're, you know, if they don't make any sense at all, you just dump them. But if they're good questions, give the answers, and we could do it in a similar format as we did today.
I think we definitely could, should do something like that. Um, my feeling is that we do not have the budget. We haven't made any changes to the budget yet. Um, I think that if we put this budget currently out to, um, the public for input, um, the, I think we're gonna get a lot of suggestions of, um, changes that we likely would be looking to make anyways. Um, and I think we're gonna give the perception to the public that this is the budget that we're moving forward with. I, um, and, you know, there's something to be said certainly for asking for input before we make decisions, but I do think that, um, there's some changes that as a council, we likely are pretty, you know, set on that we want to make, um, before we ask for, you know, is this right or not? Um, so I would prefer that we set another, um, budget meeting, and I think that we've now done one at four PM, I think. Did we do one at seven? Or have they both been at four?
I think the initial presentations were at six PM.
Okay, okay. Um, we've had conversation about, um, we've had conversation about the budget, our regular meetings of council, so maybe we should try a six or a seven PM as well. Um, I think we should certainly be doing some kind of, um, online. I know that we, we advertise the meetings online, but maybe we can advertise that we will, you know, through Facebook, take, um, questions online at our next, at the end of our next budget meeting or something like that, um, after we've had the opportunity to go through and make changes. Um, I think the next meeting is when we should go through and, um, you know, decide if we want all of these capital projects in, decide if there's changes to be made. Um, if we have specific changes we would like to make, um, you know, see additions or reductions in specific, um, departments, we can either ask for how we would potentially do that prior, so that staff could bring us reports, um, or we could ask for those options at our next budget meeting. Okay, I'm not getting a lot of feedback here.
I'll make a quick comment.
Sure.
Just, I'm, I'm, I think that we need to do that work as council before we do the public engagement. I, I'm still not completely fluent or comfortable with the budget that we have before us. I think there's still more, uh, line-by-line items. I've got questions about the five-point-nine percent and how it applies to the industrial taxes and, um, business tax and stuff like that. So there's just a bunch more questions that need to be, um, fleshed out. I would suspect that there will probably be some areas where we'll ask department heads to go back and look very seriously and very hard at their departmental budgets, and, um, Madam Mayor, you may just say, hey, look, you gotta come back and present something revised within a percentage or whatever we feel is comfortable as a council. But, uh, but I, I like the E-Town Hall. I think, I can't remember if we did one last year or...
I think it was a year before we did a...
I think we did one, uh, I know we did one two years ago, and, and actually, it was really good, and I was surprised at the amount of E-input, and we could, we were able to do that live as things were going on. So people, I think some people feel more comfortable in their home setting rather than being in here and getting up in front of people as well. But, uh, I think it'd be a big mistake if we didn't do some sort of public consultation, for sure.
Absolutely. Counselor Washington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I agree, we need one more kick at this one before we, we go public. And, uh, if we do an electronic input, like, we'll, we'll take one more kick at this and then we'll go back to maybe even the Cow Me- committee, the whole meeting on the eighteenth, and then have it open, electronic open forum.
Okay.
Would work for me.
Okay. Counselor Poon?
Thank you. I agree that we should have a online input, um, structure and, um, to have another, um, opportunity to do so. Um, I think some people are just more comfortable when they're hiding behind their screens and keyboards.
That is very true. Counselor Corbial, any thoughts?
Uh, no. I agree with what, uh, has been said, that, uh, maybe we need to have one more kick at the can and then, uh, open it up for, uh, input from the, uh, community.
Okay, Counselor Sola?
So definitely, I agree with everybody here at this table. Um, I do agree that, um, where do I want to go with this? I just have a question for the CAO, actually. CAO, how much of a percentage do we need to, or how much, how much dollars do we need to bring down the budget a percent?
Roslin can tell us that.
Yeah, just to be...
Depends if we're talking a percent on the budget increase or, or on a, on single-family residents' average.
No, on, on the budget itself. Like, so if we're from six percent to bring, bring it down five percent, how much do we need?
I calculated it based on average single-family residents, because I thought that's what you might want to go for. Um, so if I, I'll give you that number. Uh, so for every increase or decrease in percentage, uh, so in example, we're at, uh, five, five-point-two. If you wanted to go down to four-point-two, that's a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay, because I'm not very comfortable with the budget, although I would love to have all this. I mean, we need to move forward somewhere, but because of the strike and all these people that are affected and that, I would like to see us move where we bring it down this year and then bring it up to where we need to next year. Just, and I know we can't do that with every strike, but this has been a long one, and people are having a hard time finding mortgages the bank or paying their mortgage, and the bank is trying to work with them on this, but how long will they do that for? So I'm quite uncomfortable with that at this moment. Thank you.
Sure. Counselor Paulson?
I'm, I'm a little bit confused because I see five-point-nine percent as a number, and you just mentioned five-point-two. So for the uninitiated...
I was somewhat confused on that as well, because the, um, report we have in our agenda on page twenty-four, if we could bring it up, um, it's listed twenty-four at...
on page 24, if we could bring it up, it's listed 24 on the agenda. It shows, oh no, it is 5.2.
So what did I see?
I thought I saw 5.9 earlier in the single family.
I think it's earlier in the...
That's the actual budget increase.
Right.
Correct, Madam Mayor. So the, the budget increase, so when we're looking at total tax dollars are, yeah, so right up above our 24.5 million. When we look at that, that's, that's our actual tax dollars required to fund our budget. So that is the 5.9%. And when we look at the 5.2%, that's when we're looking at the average single family impact.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. So we have more, more changes to come because we have not talked about the train or we have not put any money in the budget for the train. If we want to, then we have to recognize that will drive this up past 5.2%. We've heard that there is not the full amount of borrowing required for the Sewage Lagoon project, which, you know, I don't see that as something we have a choice whether we want to move forward on based, or based on. We are moving forward with that project so that those funds need to be added to the budget. So this is going to be higher than the 5.2 that we're currently sitting at. I think at the next council meeting, I would like to see us go through and make any suggested changes or any changes that we want to propose changing. So if council could try to come prepared to that meeting with things we would like to either add in or take out of the budget, we won't go through it, or we certainly could go through it line by line, but we've done that now. I think council should bring the proposed changes. For lines that, or you know, changes beyond, I think we often just go to the capital because we can see what's the, what the capital projects cost, where they're being funded from. It's more difficult to make a change to an operating budget because we don't have as full of an understanding of where those, what's in those numbers. If council does want to look at any, changes to anything beyond the capital budget, I think we need to be prepared to ask the managers for a report on how we could make a possible change in whichever department that we're looking at. And then we won't have that information next meeting. We would have it at the following budget meeting because council would need to pass a motion to get that information. Unless there's any areas that today council would like to request, how do we save this much money in this area? And I don't know if we're prepared to give that direction today or make those requests. So I think that that's what council needs to come prepared to do at our next budget meeting and we'll leave it to staff to, to schedule the next meeting.
There's a report coming on fiber optics, right?
There's a report coming on fiber optics. There's no money in the budget for fiber optics.
Yeah.
City Clerk?
I just wanted to comment, Madam Mayor, that it looks like February 3rd might be a good, um, date for a next committee of the whole meeting.
Okay. Okay. All right. Are there any, is there any information we want to request tonight? Seeing none? Would somebody like to move?
I actually do have a request regarding the Third Avenue, I mean, the Third Avenue project. How can we do that in phases maybe instead of all at once? Or is that $400,000 that was mentioned in it, sorry, it's not on my screen right now, is that a matching grant? How does that work? And so maybe that could be a project that we could look at.
And, and I think we are already getting a report on that for our next council meeting. So we will have that information and be able to have that conversation prior to the next budget meeting. So if we want to make changes to that project, we'd be, have the information to do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have a lot of reports coming.
Okay, Counsel Soldo, would you like to move adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor? Carried. Thank you.